We're live and now recording. Thanks, Katie. Can we go ahead and have a roll call, please? Yes. Mr. Antonio?
Here.
Mr. Badger?
Here.
Mr. Bleefeld?
Here.
Ms. Kiyvachi?
Here.
Mr. Frank? Mrs. Hayman?
Here.
Ms. Carrie Anikis?
Here.
Dr. Morris?
Here.
Mrs. Ginsburg?
Here.
Carly Meltzer?
Here.
And Gavin Lewis Richmond?
Here.
Eight present, one absent, and two student board reps this evening.
Thanks, Katie. And I wanted to invite up two of our students, Toby and Stella. They're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone. A special welcome to our Stony Creek families, and this is Venancia that are joining us this evening. All right, looking at our agenda, our prior meetings are first listed out. January 9th, we had our regular public board meeting. January 17th, we had a Board Racial Equity Oversight Committee meeting. January 23rd, we had our policy committee meeting. And January 25th was the NCIU Board of Directors meeting. Next, we list out our upcoming meetings. On February 6th, we'll have our next regular public board meeting. February 13th, our Finance Committee Budget Workshop, which I encourage people to attend, is where you actually get like an in-depth look at our budget. February 21st is our next Board Racial Equity Oversight Committee. February 22nd will be the next NCIU Board of Directors meeting. And February 27th is our next work session. Now we'll move on to our presentations.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank you for helping us with the Pledge of Allegiance there. I noted that we have to slow our tempo down a little bit to match what the proper tempo is, which you share with us from the school. So thank you for that. We'll remember that. The first presentation tonight, it's a pleasure to introduce some friends from Stony Creek Elementary School. And to do that, and then to get on with the important stuff, is the principal, Ms. Paula Venancia.
Good evening, Mrs. Ginsburg. This is Ginsburg and members of the board, Dr. Chrisfield and Cabinet. I am Paula Venancia, the principal at Stony Creek Elementary School. Tonight, I am excited and eager to share with you something that has returned to our schools in all its glory after being quiet for a couple of years. A couple of weeks ago, for the first time since the 2019-2020 school year, we held a full concert at our school that included our chorus, strings, and band. Our auditorium was packed with parents, family members, and friends. And we are so happy to have music fully back in our schools. Tonight, we have a special treat for you. We have some members of our band who will perform this evening. Our band director, Steph Rushton, will be leading our band members. And our general music teacher, Brianna Carson, is also here to assist. Our performers this evening are Ryan McElroy, Seraphina Yagoudi, Daniel Moon, Martina Marzano, Stella Holland, Adam Escala, Alex Skrick Long, Abigail G., and Toby Segal. I'm going to invite Ms. Rushton to come up and just share a little bit more information about our band.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. My students and I are really excited to be here. And we're just really excited to share the talents of the Stony Creek students and to represent the elementary music program. Tonight, I have nine of my fifth grade band members here. And these students work incredibly hard. They get to work with me once a week in the daily lessons. They also come early in the morning to before-school practices to work for the full band. And they put in a lot of their hard work at home to make sure that they're ready to go for our performances. Today, we will be performing the familiar tune, "Winter Wonderland." It's usually performed by all 36 fifth-grade band members. So we hope you enjoy our small ensemble.
Thank you, Ms. Rushton and band members. You were wonderful. At this time, we have one of our students who's going to come up and say a few things.
Good evening. I hope you enjoyed our performance. We also like to thank all of our board members for their service, time, and effort you put towards the school, for the effort you put towards our Whistaken students, staff, and families. Happy School Board Appreciation Month.
And at this time, our band members are going to come up and just deliver a few little gifts to you all this evening.
Thank you so much again for that amazing performance. I actually got to attend the one at Stony Creek with the full band, our chorus, and strings. And it was just absolutely amazing. So wonderful work, and thank you, guys. Parents, you're welcome to stay if you'd like to for the rest of the meeting. Or if not, you're also welcome to leave. Oh, yeah, please take cookies, coffee, water, brownies to speak.
All good.
Yeah, please, take some. And thank you again. All right, our next presentation.
Amy, I just want to make a quick comment. Pre-COVID, we used to have, I think, it seemed like, I think, a monthly visit as part of our school board meetings, a visit from one of the school communities presenting on some topic or performance or whatever. And that was also, that was always a great opportunity for us to just like see firsthand some of the students and some of their talents and hear some of the great things going on. We had a little bit of a hiatus for a while. I think this was maybe one of the first times that we've had kids back at the board meeting. And it's a welcome return, and I hope we see more of this in the future, and every month even. Thanks.
Rita, it was wonderful to have our students back in the boardroom. But thank you for setting that up.
Okay, thank you. And now, first, I need to apologize to Dr. Dewan for having her draw the short straw of now getting to present a presentation on test results after we had those fun kids here. So anyway, that is what it is, Dr. Dewan, I'm sorry. And as everyone might remember, we used to have, or we've had this annual report almost every year, except for last year was put off because of the state testing was delayed or actually canceled for the one year. So this is the annual report revisited, and now it'll resume. And with the spring 2022 results, Dr. Dewan.
Thank you, and thank you for acknowledging how difficult this will be to follow such an amazing presentation by the students. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to share a brief overview of the district's state assessment results. As we know, over the past few years, districts everywhere were focused on returning to instruction, delivering high-quality instruction in the safest way possible, considering instructional delivery, considering student participation, considering school staffing, student transportation. All of these areas were impacted to varying degrees. And multiple outliers have impacted the comparability aspect of looking at data. And so you'll hear throughout this presentation a note of caution that the Pennsylvania Department of Education has urged districts against comparing data or potentially misinterpreting the state results. So I want to just give that note of caution and help you to know that you'll hear that a few times throughout the presentation this evening. So for tonight's presentation, the purpose of this report is, of course, to provide a district-wide overview of student performance. And we'll be looking at the PSSA and the Keystone exams. And I'll give a little background of information on those assessments so that we all have that same shared understanding. We'll also take a historical review. We'll be looking back at the timeframe of the last five years and understanding that the state assessments were canceled in the spring of 2020. And the subject areas we'll be looking at are noted here. These are the areas that are covered by the PSSAs and the Keystone exams. So here's an overview in terms of where we are and where we're going. I'll start with a brief, providing some understanding of the state assessments, just again to make sure we have a shared understanding. And then we'll take a little, a little brief moment to consider the impact of the COVID pandemic on the Keystone exams, because that'll come up, as you'll notice throughout the data when we're having conversation and looking at the data. I'll give an overview of the demographic peer group that we'll be using as we look at the data graphs of proficiency trends across those subject areas in those grade levels that are outlined here. And then, at the end of the presentation, I'll talk about the use of assessment data. Oftentimes, people wonder, what are the data used for? And I'll also want to acknowledge multiple measures of data that we use in the district. And we'll take a look briefly at action steps and resources for families, resources for district staff as well. So just very briefly, the Every Student Succeeds Act actually replaced No Child Left Behind. I know we're all very familiar with No Child Left Behind. So this ESSA state requirement is where it lands now. Of course, state testing didn't start when this happened, but just so that we're having some shared language. And under ESSA, we know that we have to assess students at specific grade levels in specific subject areas. And Pennsylvania has outlined the Keystone exams and the PSSAs to meet those requirements, those federal requirements that states are required to provide in terms of looking at progress of schools and districts across the state to make sure that there is a way for the state and districts to look at student achievement toward the Pennsylvania standards. I just want to make note that the data that we'll see is far from the whole picture. We use, locally, schools and districts have a variety of ways that we assess students to get the complete story, a more complete story. Still, we know that this data are important. And so we do look at the data that we collect from the state assessments. Participation in state assessments is a requirement for all, for all districts to participate and for all students to participate. Of course, we know that there is the option for some families who choose to opt out. That's in accordance with the state law. But that, those students that opt out are still measured in our proficiency count. So I just want to have that sort of shared understanding as we take a look at the data, because that'll come up again later on in terms of state participation, excuse me, test participation. So here's a brief overview of the state assessments that we're talking about. When we say PSSA, we're talking about the Pennsylvania System of School Assessment, which measures students' achievement in English Language Arts in grades three through eight, mathematics in grades three through eight, and science in grades four and eight. And then for our Keystone exams, these are end-of-course high school assessments in Algebra I, Literature, and Biology. Scores are banked for grade 11. Scores for the Keystone exam have always been banked for grade 11. It's not often a point of conversation, though, across districts, across the state, prior to now. And the reason for that is because when we look at the data in some of the years, we have, it's not a representative sample of students' data. And so that's why it's important for us to know that the scores are banked for grade 11. So for example, students who take the Algebra Keystone exam, they take the exam at the conclusion of participating in the Algebra I course. They may have taken that course in seventh grade. They may take that course in eighth grade. They may take that course in ninth grade. Whatever grade they take the course in, that's when they take the exam. And then their scores are banked in terms of reporting purposes until grade 11. Okay? And again, this, that part is not new, but it's important that we understand it explicitly right now, because we'll see how that shows up in terms of the state waiver for the 1920 school year when we look at data this evening. Speaking of the waiver, in the spring of 2020, the state waived Keystone exams for all students. And they waived exams for the PSSAs as well. And so we'll see how that data are not reported for the 2020 school year. The reason why we have to lift up what happened with the Keystone exam again goes back to the scores being banked. So when we look at the spring 2020, the exams were waived for all students who met two conditions. If they were first-time test takers and they earned a passing grade in the course, that's applicable to the Keystone exam. So that meant not all students had the test waived. That will come up when we're looking at the Keystone data this evening. Again, looking at the scores, I think I mentioned this already, how it's banked. In the Whistaken School District, students in 10th grade take the literature exam. That's when our district recognized, looking at the scope and sequence of English Language Arts, the best time for students to take the exam for literature is grade 10. And so students who are in grade 10 for that literature exam for 2020, who are in the class of 2022, their cohort, that's the cohort of students whose test scores were waived in that grade. For biology, that test is taken by students in grade nine. That's when they take that assessment, excuse me, they take that course. And if they were to take the course in a different grade, they would have that assessment in that other grade. And for the class of 2023, they were in ninth grade in 2020. And so their data were waived for that cohort of class of 2023. And then for algebra, I mentioned, these are students who may have taken that assessment in grade seven, eight, or nine. So they're in a variety of cohorts. The reason why this is noted here is because we see the students who had their assessments waived in 2020 were students in the class of 2023, 2024, and 2025. So from now until 2025, we'll be having a conversation about an incomplete sample of students of whose data we'll be, we'll be taking a look at between now and 2025. If that makes sense, just give me a head nod if that's making sense. Okay, thank you. Okay. And so the following slides will take a look at proficiency trends by test, by subject area, and by grade level band. And I show those grade level bands a moment ago, grades three through five, grades six through eight, and the Keystone exams, which are banked until grade 11. In all cases, you'll see that we'll compare, we'll use it as comparative data, this demographic peer group that the Whistaken School District has often used when looking at state assessment scores. And the demographic group is defined here for you on the screen. In all cases, you'll see that the, that the Whistaken School District is comparatively speaking performing higher than our demographic peer group and higher than groups across the state. However, the, the state continues to caution us against the comparison. So it's here, because I know that that's often what wants to be looked at in terms of looking at the data. We're, we recognize that. However, I'm going to continue to talk about the caution against the comparisons, because we don't know, in a snapshot of looking at that data, we don't know what districts had access to as it related to resources during the 2021 school year, or the 2020 school year, or the 2022 school year. We don't know their attendance and participation rates in state assessments. We don't know those many factors that affect scores from when we look, when we look at state testing. We'll continue to keep that in mind. So we'll start with English Language Arts. And here, we're looking at the reading and writing standards. And we'll notice here, in terms of how the data are displayed on this, on the proficiency trends, this is what the graph will look like as we're looking at the PSSA and the Keystone. The blue line is the Whistaken School District. And we're looking at the years 2017, 2018, 2019, 2021, and 2022. We can see there was a slight decrease in the scores for 2021, and then an increase close to where we were pre-pandemic, generally speaking, in terms of our district's performance. As we look at proficiency trends in Language Arts and ELA in grades six through eight, we can see, again, there was a slight decrease in scores in 2021. And in 2022, a slight increase. Not back to pre-pandemic, but trends are in the right direction, which is good to see. Here, we have our first look at the Keystone exam data. And you'll notice on this slide, of course, 2020 is missing. We know there's no 2020 data. I said that to begin with. But here, 2021 data are missing. I should throw it out for a pop quiz. Who knows why? Because students, I think we have an answer there? Students whose data would be represented here for 2021 would have been in 10th grade during 2020 when the exam was waived. And so we have no data for our students who would have had their scores banked for the 2021 school year. And as we look at the trends here, we can see relative stability as it relates to the Keystone proficiency in Literature. We'll take a look at mathematics now. And starting with proficiency trends in math in grades three through five, again, we see a slight decrease in testing results for 2021, and then a slight increase close to where we were pre-pandemic. When we look at grades six through eight, again, we see, actually here, a pretty significant decrease in our proficiency trends in math for grades three through eight. And then 2022, we have a slight increase compared to 2021. Consistently, we see the same pattern in our peer demographic group and in the state data. And now we'll take a look at the Keystone proficiency trends for Algebra. So in 2021, here, we see a slight decrease in results. And then for 2022, we see what appears to be a significant increase. However, we have to be cautious about misinterpreting the data. Remember, the results are banked for students who are in their 11th, until they're in their 11th grade year. And so the, the results for students for the class of 2023, which is what we see here, data for 11th grade for 2022, these students could have taken their exam, the Keystone exam, in 7th grade, in 8th grade, or in 9th grade, depending on when they completed the Algebra I course. Students' data who were in 9th grade are missing. And so the data we see are the data from students who completed the Algebra course in 7th grade and 8th grade, whose scores were banked until now. This is not a representative sample of our students for the 2022 school year. We'll continue to see what appears to be, we suspect, over the next few years when we look at Keystone data specifically, what appears to be unstable data. But it's important for us to keep that in mind because of what we know about the, the waiver year.
So, Dr. Dewan, when you say it's not representative, is it, would be my understanding that the students who take Algebra I in 7th grade or 8th grade are, in essence, sort of taking it ahead of schedule? Like, I guess, the standard track would be to take Algebra in 9th grade. So then, if the data is only made up of students who took the Algebra I exam in 7th and 8th grade, then that's going to be, you know, a certain cohort of folks who are, I guess, ahead of the, the standard schedule in math. And that's why maybe the overall numbers are higher than typical.
That's exactly right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Dewan, I have a question as well. So the concept of banking, that's not just here at Whistaken, that's at all.
Everywhere across the state, it's the Pennsylvania Department of Education who sets that pattern of banking the scores until grade 11.
So how can we really use this data to improve here at Whistaken? Because we're always looking possibly three, four years back. We're not really knowing current data based on these tests.
Great question. Respectfully, may I hold that until later in the presentation? Because I feel like we're going to go there, and it's going to be very fulfilling for you, I hope. I'm sure of it. It's a, it's a, it's a really important question, though. And that's one of the reasons why I'm going to talk about how we use the data. So thank you for that question. All right, we'll take a look at science, starting with the PSSA proficiency trends in grade four. Again, we see the same pattern of a slight decrease in testing for 2021, and then an increase here, back to where we were pre-pandemic, for science in grade four. And just to note, I don't think I need to say this, I know we're all on the same page. For PSSA, students take the test in the grade that's reported here, right? The only banking procedure happens for Keystone exams. For our students in grade eight, here are our data. Here we see a significant decrease in testing results for the PSSA science in grade eight for the 2021 school year. And then we see the significant increase in 2022, getting close to where we were pre-pandemic. And now the Keystone. Everybody just relax. So here, this data illustrates yet another example of why PDE urges districts to interpret the data with caution. Here, we all see the same thing, that there's a significant decrease in proficiency scores for our Keystone Biology exam for 2022. Generally, we also see both our peers and districts across the state have the same significant decrease. But we need to understand the context here. So students in So students in 11th grade in 2022, for the 2022 data here, would have taken the Keystone exam for Biology in ninth grade in 2020. In ninth grade, students had the waiver, right? Only students eligible for the waiver were students who were first-time testers and completed the course, had a passing grade for the course. Those were students who were eligible for that waiver. You might recall from earlier in the presentation, me explaining that. So students who are represented in this sample are students who were not eligible for the waiver, which means they were not getting a passing grade for Biology. And it's an in-count of about 20, which also included students who may have moved in, in the year coming into Wisconsin School District without being eligible for the waiver where they were the prior, prior year, prior district. Yet another example of why the state urges us not to misinterpret the data. Seeing this without the context would raise some significant alarms. Understanding the context helps us to know, yes, we have work to do. But this is, it's not as dramatic as it's represented here in our data, in the data trends. Okay, so the next couple of slides we'll talk about, this is one of the resources I wanted to share. This is a resource for schools, for teachers, for families and caregivers. It provides more information about state measures as well as other measures of accountability that the state has across the state, looking at on-track measures, college and career readiness. All of that is accessible here on this site. At the bottom of the screen that you're looking at here, I have a little snippet of the window where families and teacher resources can be found. If families and, of course, our staff are, are well, are well aware of the resources available. But if there are families and caregivers who are interested in digging in more, you're more than welcome to check this website out. It's the Pennsylvania Future Ready Index. It also provides a glossary of terms to help understand the lingo a little more as well. And so we want to take a moment to think about and understand the broader scope of data that we collect, the multiple measures of assessment that we have. We know that assessment plays a critical role in understanding our students' needs in, in terms of the teaching and learning process. Our district uses diagnostic, formative, and summative assessments to help us to really focus on student learning and help promote their achievement. We, of course, look at national, state, local assessments, curriculum-based assessments. We in fact have on our district website an assessment page to help families understand all of these various different types of assessments that are noted here. I won't spend a length of time explaining all of them, but they are all accessible on our website, on the assessment page. But my point in sharing this here is it's important for us to recognize and understand that we as a district have multiple ways of measuring students' progress toward the Pennsylvania, of course, Pennsylvania academic standards to evaluate our effectiveness of our programs and evaluate our students' strengths and needs. One of the things that I always, I want, I was excited to share, and this goes back to Ms. Ginsburg's question, is what are we doing with the data and how are we using it to help drive decisions in our district? And so thinking about it from multiple lenses. This evening's lens is a very high-level, brief overview of how our district is doing with lots of cautions. As district administrators, we use our data to think about continuous improvement efforts. What are the areas that we need to focus on? What resources do we need to allocate? What professional learning needs might exist? How might we need to look at our curriculum and identify gaps, potential gaps, and areas that we need to strengthen? So our curriculum review process is a part of that district lens. In terms of school administrators, they look at their school data and that, that helps them to set goals and priorities and focus areas, either school-wide, grade-level specific, subject-specific. And again, thinking about professional learning and student support in their building. From the teacher's lens, looking at student data is an awesome opportunity to reflect on effectiveness of instructional practices. How am I supporting my students and helping them to get where they need to be? What additional supports and interventions do I need to put in place in the classroom? Looking and assessing students' strengths and needs and helping to plan interventions. Another note, though, here is, as a district, whether it's teacher lens, the school district, the school or district lens, we recognize that we also have to use people. When we think about our data, we need to think about our teachers. We need to tap into our students and leverage the relationships with our families to help us to humanize the data, to help us to understand what are the data telling us in terms of meeting our individual students' needs. And so looking at just numbers is not what happens when we think about the various lenses here. We also need to be cautious about making assumptions about our students' needs. And so digging into the data and looking at additional qualitative data is essential in the process at, at the building level, at the district level, working with teachers and administrators to engage with families, engage with students to learn more, asking questions, to better understand the data and to better understand students' needs and strengths and how to leverage those strengths to support their needs. That was not the purpose of our conversation this evening, right? But that is an important conversation, an important part of the story that you wouldn't see here at the board meeting presentation that I wanted to make sure to acknowledge. So as we look ahead, every district has a comprehensive state plan. Our district revised, or rather submitted the comprehensive state plan last spring. So that is a driving force to help us think about what are the areas of growth in going through that, developing that state plan. We also know that there are conversations about the middle school schedule that's going to be implemented in '23 and '24. And so those are some opportunities that the middle school has taken to leverage finding ways for additional time, for example, for supporting students in math, for example, which is connected to what we saw in terms of our data needs that we've seen here in terms of the data trends. We're aware of the elementary school schedule that's explored for implementation next school year. And while our teams are working hard to ensure that we know we need more time for recess, they're also thinking strategically about ensuring we're not using that, taking that time away from what is most essential in terms of looking at the academic needs of our students. And so our principals are working closely with their school schedule teams to really be conscientious of what that will look like in terms of the shift for providing more of the recess time, which we know students need, while also not compromising the necessary time for academic instruction in the schedule. And then we're always making sure that we recognize students' social, emotional, and mental health needs, providing resources, because we know the impact on student progress is significant. Our administrators are always looking at reflecting on our systems and our supports. And so I've captured here some of the things that we are working on this year. And all of it includes us really looking at real-time data, data that are collected in ways that are everyday, ongoing, whether that's data on professional learning needs, data on student interventions all throughout the year to make sure that we're providing the necessary instruction, intervention, and accelerating learning. And lastly, we'll continue to support our student achievement and we'll continue to seek ways to improve academic outcomes for all of our students to ensure their success in the Wisconsin School District and in life. So thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Dewan. I guess I'll start us off with questions. So, well, I appreciate there's a number of different assessments that we use and different methods we use to track student performance. I guess I'm just kind of curious, and maybe you don't know the answer to this. Like, what is the point behind the Keystone test? Like, what is, what, what does the state using that data for if we're always looking back several years? Like, it's not a current-day picture.
Thank you for revisiting and clarifying your question. The state is required to assess students in those subject areas. That's a federal requirement. The state is able to use that data for accountability measurements for districts across the state. The state is, is not likely digging into thinking about the level of data conversations and uses of data that we are thinking about. Beyond that, I don't know that I could answer your question in terms of why the state has selected the assessment that they've selected. But I can say that it's a federal requirement that all states test students in those specific grade levels, excuse me, in those specific, well, grade levels, but also in those subject areas at the secondary level of Algebra, Biology, and Literature. And the best answer I can give is it's accountability in terms of district accountability.
Amy, if you're, if you're speaking specifically about the Keystone exams, I think the intent when the state moved to Keystone exams, it was, I think, kind of like an exit requirement for high school graduation. So one of the concerns was that, you know, high school diploma, we wanted to make sure that it was of quality, right? So, because you can get a high school diploma prior to Keystone's, you know, simply for going through all, taking all the classes and just pass, right? But they wanted to have some kind of separate measure that could check, see that you got your high school diploma, yes, but did you meet minimum proficiency standards in these key subject areas? So it was meant more for like exit purposes and kind of like proving the quality of the high school degree that the school system is giving versus, you know, like assessing and approving performance during the career. So I mean, it's the Keystone, that's why the Keystone's are a little bit different than the way the PSSAs are in the, in the earlier grades.
Thanks. So yeah, that clarifies more for me what exactly they're using that data for. Because it just seems sort of silly to always be looking back at the current data, but that makes more sense. So thank you.
But generally speaking, I mean, PSSA results and Keystone results, if you think about timing, they're administered in the spring, right? So fifth grade math, they get a test in the spring. We don't get the results until the fall of the next school year. So by the time you get it, the kids are already in sixth grade now, right? So it's, it's like looking backwards. So things like PSSA results, Keystone exams, I mean, I think they could be helpful in terms of assessing overall performance of the district, but they're not that helpful in terms of like tracking and helping improve individual performance of students because they come so late in the game and after the fact, right? But there's a whole bunch of other assessments that the district and our schools are involved with. And they made reference to in the slides about formative assessments and benchmarks that are done throughout the year, which give quicker turnaround of the data and could give actual teachers time to adjust and adapt what they're doing in the classroom to try to meet students' needs in the moment.
Right, yeah. And I understand we're doing other forms of assessments throughout the year. Just, and Joe's explanation makes sense to me. Like, the SSSA is, you know, we're at least looking back one year, the prior year. But it makes sense to me, the Keystone's, why we're looking so far back. But now, thank you for clarifying. That, that does make more sense. Are there other questions from my fellow board? Becky, go ahead.
So thank you for the presentation. And I understand that this is more of a state requirement. But that being said, we did discuss having more checkpoints on our own data points throughout the year. So when will we be seeing the next kind of version or iteration of what we're looking at?
Thank you for that. And as I recall, the conversation was specifically around the achievement data, looking at the achievement gap specifically. So I know that there is, that the district is working on the dashboard where that data is going to be represented. And I should have probably noted that this was not that. I tried to say what, what this is and what it's not, but thank you for your question. And so in terms of a timeline, I'm not, I actually don't know off the top of my head in terms of when the next checkpoint will be on that, but we can get that to you. Thank you.
Marshall, go ahead.
Yeah, in looking at the, the data, I understand that we're looking at trends and sort of tracking things. And I don't think it's surprising that it went down during the pandemic and it's inching its way back up. But the one area that was concerning was in Biology, where all of the other subjects across the other grades were trending up. And who knows if that'll continue? We're going to have to see more data. There was a significant drop-off in Biology specifically. While it was noted that, you know, there are students who are not eligible for waivers at that point, I think it is disconcerting to see such a large drop-off. The question is, what are we doing if we know at that particular data point that there's a significant drop-off while others are going back up, seemingly all the other ones? What are we doing or what can we do to figure out why there's that drop-off? And how can we correct that with the students who need that?
Thank you for your question and thank you for your acknowledgement in terms of the word of caution as it relates to misinterpreting the data. Your point is exactly right. The data are still dropping significantly. And because that, because we know all of what we know in terms of the number of students, for example, it's, the number is 20. Those were also, I'll just repeat, I'm going to, I promise I'm going to answer your question, but I'm just going to repeat that those were students who were not eligible for the waiver because they were not having a passing grade in the course and/or students who were transferred into, after ninth grade without having their waiver credit. And so the specific demographic, let's say, or not demographic, but the specific type of student whose data we're looking at among those 20 students are our most struggling science learners. And so that has to also be taken into consideration, knowing what we know about the data. That said, this year is the year that we are doing our curriculum review for Science. And so our curriculum review process is looking, again, of course, vertically throughout K-12. But a part of that is absolutely the standards in grades six through 12, which have been revised by PDE to be in alignment with the National Science Standard Coalition. Don't quote me on that, but the National Science Standards. And so it's, it, that is more in alignment with what's assessed on the Keystone exam. So we believe throughout that curriculum review process, we're going to be able to find potential points of, of entry for leveraging and strengthening our, our science work.
So if you're talking about 20 students who are known to struggle in that course, doesn't that tell you that those are the people who need extra attention? And how do we figure out how to get them that extra attention? Whether it's by extra help, classes, whatever it may be. You seemingly know who they are. Are we targeting those students to say, how do we help them specifically?
Yes.
Because they are struggling.
Yes, yes. And those are conversations that are happening at the school level. So that would be a conversation at the high school. And there are various ways that students can gain extra support in subject areas. And so the answer to your question is yes, the high school knows who those students are. Yes, they are absolutely being responsive to the data. And yes, they have other data sets that they're using to ensure that they're clarifying what the students' needs specifically are, so that they're targeting those.
And will we be tracking those particular 20 students to see if we can help them to get their scores up so that they can achieve whatever goal it is they can achieve without a further drop-off?
So as it relates specifically, I'm going to put the Keystone aside for a second because the Keystone scores are what they are. They're banked for 11th grade and that's what the report is. Aside from the Keystone, the answer to your question would be yes. But that would be work that the high school is doing, working with, tracking the students' data. Yes. Thank you for your question.
Any questions? I did have one other question, great question. The demographic peer group, how do we choose the schools that we're comparing ourselves to other than they appear to be neighboring districts?
We, we do look at relatively local, so that is one. We also look at the percentage of students' racial and ethnic identity to see what's comparable to our district. We look at students from, who are the percentage of students from low-income households comparable to our district. The percentage of students, the spending per student, like the per student spending or per pupil spending of the district. So comparing our data to a district that has double the per pupil spending would really be far out of context. And looking at student-teacher ratio to see what's comparable. And that's what helps us drill down to the six here, five here, the five here.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, Seaman, thank you so much for that presentation this evening.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on now to, sorry, that was loud. First public comment period. We do allow a maximum of five speakers to be heard on the same topic. This evening, because I do anticipate we'll have a few people on the same topic, particularly school start times. I will allow 30 minutes of public comment on that particular topic. Please make sure to limit your comments to three minutes. We are pretty strict on that, so I will cut you off if you do go beyond three minutes. Please know it's not our practice to engage in dialogue with speakers. When appropriate, we will follow up with responses on our district website. When you approach the podium, please state your name and your municipality of residence. And if you are speaking in person here, please make sure you have a blue form filled out and you can send that to Katie, the right outside the door. All right, so we will begin with our first speaker, Kimberly Zeszkowicz. I'm sorry if I said that wrong. It's going to be second public comment period. I apologize.
The extracurricular list is also an agenda topic?
Oh, that is true. Yeah, so you can, yes. I'm sorry.
You good? All right. My name's Kimberly Strobridge. Do I have to go over that again or no? We're good. Okay. I have a daughter and two boys that are seniors this year. And in February of last year, my boys came home to tell me that they were having open gyms for volleyball. They're all excited. They went from February to the end of the school year. They would even go out in the backyard. They loved playing so much, they would go out in the backyard to practice. And then I was advised that during the summertime, there were going to be also practice times that they could go and meet up at the, at a park. And there was a whole bunch of kids that would come, and it was amazing. Even in the heat, there were kids that were walking to come to the park and even riding bikes to come and play volleyball. But just those few months from February to the end of the school year. that they, it fostered a sense of community, not just an after after club sport, but yet a sense of community. They would love the kids that were coming out to play. There was such a large group of boys and girls. So during the summertime, the girls who were gonna try out in the fall got to practice their skills, get better, got to, like my boys, they would get a better sense of confidence, exercise. And then the fall came, the girls went and they played, they donned on a Whistaken uniform, got to go out, got to represent the school and compete against other teams and play. The boys, however, I was told that they were going to try to start up a boys team. And there's a large number of boys that come out. Like I said, in summertime, there are boys, even boys that had graduated that will come back because it's such a great opportunity and a great group of kids. They love being around each other and playing the sport. My boys have not played any other sports for the school, weren't interested in playing any other sports. However, they're very much interested and would love, before they get to graduate, like I said, to put on a uniform and all these skills that they practiced and have, even in their own time, like I said, went out in the yard and practiced and bettered themselves. They don't get the opportunity because they're boys to put on a uniform and represent in a competitive team environment, the school. And I just think it's such a shame because the amount of time that the coach and the players take to get together and play together, it it's just that they're not given the opportunity because they're boys. And to me, that's just such a it's a sad, it's sad for them that they are just like they see their sister play and represent the school, but sorry, you can't because you're a boy. So that's all I want to say is that it's a shame that the school, if it doesn't even consider setting up a boys' team and giving the boys the same opportunities as the girls.
Anyone register online? Okay, he's the first person.
We have Claudine Pacchio.
You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, thanks. Claudine Pacchio, I have three kids in the district, two in high school and one in the middle school. And I just wanted to call and get some comments on the starting school later. You know, I would agree that this should not be taken lightly. I know there's a lot of people angry that we're still looking at it, but it is a valid concern for our kids. And there's a lot of districts that came before us that have faced very similar issues and have been able to overcome those. And I think we can learn from all them. I do believe that you were all going to be able to hear from the superintendent of Radnor based on the last meeting that you had as well. I do want to say to everybody too, I never, when my kids were in elementary school, I never would have thought this was an issue. They were waking up at 6:00 AM with no problems at all. So it does change. It is true that their biology does change as they raise or as they get older. I do want to encourage everyone to watch the TED Talk by Dr. Wendy Troxel. I'm led to believe that that's now on the website. It's a it's a quick talk because it is a TED Talk. But to listen from the science itself as to why this is so important. The takeaway from that is the teenage brain is about two hours behind ours. So when when they are waking up at 6:00 AM, it's like an adult waking up at 4:00 AM. So if you recall what that's like to try to function, if you have to wake up at 4:00 AM, it's it's very difficult. So that is something to take away, but I would encourage you to listen to that. And the the last thing I want to say is, you know, the midterms for for those parents who don't have kids in high school, the midterms were delayed two hours that they just took a couple of weeks ago. And from what I understand, the school lobbied to push those midterms back later on those days because there was a school year where there was a snowstorm. And when they started later, they saw a dramatic, I want to emphasize a dramatic academic improvement on those test scores. So they opted to have the midterm start two hours later going forward. So, you know, I believe that that was done for the benefit of the children and to make sure that they could, you know, have a clear mind and come in and be successful in those midterms. So I want you to keep that in mind as well, that that was started two years, two hours later and has continued to go on. And I I would say for those parents who do have high school kids who started later on those days, it was a very lovely morning with kids getting up, being refreshed, making breakfast and really able to go in and be successful on those midterms. Thanks.
Thank you, Claudine. Our next in-person speaker will be Tina Costello.
I'm not talking about, let me step back. I'm not talking about the start times. I'm talking about volleyball. How's everyone doing? Good. Good to see people. Okay, I'll start. I have a daughter who's a sophomore at the high school and she's played volleyball for the last two years. So and she's been lucky to do that and she's enjoyed it. And this year has been great because of Coach Mitch. But I will say, I have no skin in the game. I don't have any other kids, so I'm here talking to you because I saw what happened this summer. And when we were talking about the summer and the practice, these kids came. It was optional. It was 95 degrees. I didn't want to be there. These kids came out, they played, they played with boys and girls. Now, I remember high school. I didn't want to be with the boys unless I was dating. So it was a nice environment. These kids got along, they played, they laughed, they chatted. They made relationships and friendships. And to this day, my daughter has has friends that she met from this group that was out practicing. It not only builds them physically, but mentally. And you know, you talked about the mental health issue. It's a it's a real deal. Think about where these kids in high school were two years ago. Three, whatever it's been, right? The pandemic really messed them up. And this has built them. This has given the confidence on and off the field. But the biggest thing is, this is a game. These kids love it. You know what they did? Here's one thing I forgot every month. There was a game we played against Pottstown, the girls, and this team got lost. They were awful. So Coach, after the game, said, we're gonna help these kids because the game was over so quickly, their bus wasn't there. These kids, these boys came down and helped out and helped teach these other players to play. And it's that kind of relationship. My, and it's not all about my daughter, but she she broke her fifth metatarsal the first day of practice. Sticks. She couldn't play. But she was on the sideline and these boys, after the games, would play with her and get her, you know, hitting the ball. So that's what it's about. It's about, it is a fun game. It's a fun game to watch. I'm not an athlete. But to give them this chance to do the volleyball would be phenomenal. And I'm telling you, the relationship, if, or I'm gonna be like the Eagles, when we get the volleyball for the boys, you will see not only the girls coming out to cheer, but a lot of people. And that's the school spirit. Dressing blue and gold, that's great. Let's go and see it. Let's do the spirit. Let's have the spirit. And I'm telling you, you'll see it with the volleyball, you'll see it with the support. Physically, he has, he has them working. And mentally, it's fabulous. It really puts them in a good space. And it has built relationships like no other. And for the fact that they were getting along with no judgment, just fun, laughing and never wanting to leave that field at 9:30 on a Monday night or Wednesday night or Saturday morning. It was great. So I really, I'm advocating, like I said, no skin in the game. But please, you know, think, think about it and let's let's give these boys the chance. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Katie, who's the register online next?
We have Julia Wagner.
Julie, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Julia Wagner and my son is Peter Wagner and he is a junior. And I'm also here to talk about volleyball. I'm not gonna repeat with the two parents already talked about because everything they said is exactly true for my son, Peter. And I can't emphasize enough that COVID was truly devastating for him and completely undermined his confidence and his social skills. And he really did suffer from depression during that year. And it was frightening for us. Now volleyball, he has gotten, he's been interested in volleyball since early middle school. And he found his way all on his own to various pickup games. And he found the same group that the mothers just mentioned. And he was incredibly committed to playing volleyball and learning his skills, teaching himself everything from YouTube. As he always tells me, he's learned everything from YouTube. And it has been just a tremendous experience. Unfortunately, when we looked into whether there was a real team, we found that there wasn't. And his advocacy actually started in middle school. We found, much to our disappointment, that pretty much every school that you can think of and name in our in our area and the eastern Pennsylvania has men's volleyball, whether it's Abington or it's North Penn or it's, you know, Central Bucks, they all have men's volleyball. I'm gonna talk about this a little bit differently. Men's volleyball and volleyball is the fastest growing sport in high schools for over a decade now. And it's only picking up. It also is one of the few sports that is increasing while other sports in high schools are on the decline. Between golf and volleyball, they are the only ones that are really growing compared to the other school, the other sports. So we really, we really need to serve these kids and we can't ignore these trends and the growth that's happening in this sport that has a much broader appeal than many other sports. So I think as the mother said, lots of different kids come in to play volleyball. They don't feel that it's a sport they can't play. And there is this like different aspect of volleyball that makes it feel more like a game and not always as competitive as a sport. But believe me, they are very competitive. They are also really collaborative. So I think the spirit of fun and the collaboration, you can't play volleyball like many other team sports without really building that kind of collaboration. So my son has an interest in playing in college and he's, you know, been contacted and talking to different coaches and he can't play in his own high school. So to me, that's really, really sad. I also believe the connections he would build in our school would be incredibly important. And I'd love to see him do that at WIS and not at an outside club. So thank you for attention. I really would like to understand why we wouldn't start a sport and I and I hope that we do and we get that team going. So thanks for your listening.
Thank you for your comments. All right, our next in-person speaker will be Thomas Bridges.
Hello, my name is Thomas Bridges. I am a senior at Whistaken High School. Coming into high school, so all throughout middle school, I was an athlete. Played soccer, sixth and seventh grade, eighth grade, I played soccer, basketball and track. So I was very athletic in that time. When I came to Whistaken, I was kind of lost in sports because I was tired of playing soccer. I didn't really want to do it. All the kids who were playing soccer were going for scholarships. They're really serious to taking the game. And I just kind of liked it for the fun aspect. So for ninth grade, I didn't play any sports. COVID hit around. I had all this free time and then I started getting into volleyball. Just like Peter's mother was talking about, I was on YouTube watching games, getting inspired. I got a ball, was going outside, doing serves, hitting and practicing by myself. And then that's when I got the determination in junior year, I wanted to set up a volleyball club at Whistaken. The sad part about it was when I asked, I was asking around for different spots, I was basically told it was impossible. Highly impossible. There's no gym time. There's no teachers. There's very little interest. And throughout the first semester, I was just trying. I was asking all my friends, asking people I knew if they were interested. Going around, I was considering the back lot of the high school, that huge land. And I was just really discouraged. And I was on the point of giving up. And then luckily, start of February, a friend of mine sent me an invite. They were having an open gym. So I went out and it was just amazing. Kids I barely talked to, kids I never knew. We started playing. It was always a sense of fun. It was, whenever we were serious, we're all serious. Whenever we're fun, we're all fun. Any kid who was underperforming or struggling, they would get frustrated. We would always come to them and tell them how to help them out. We wouldn't, there was no judgment. It was just everyone trying to get better, everyone trying to play better so that we can have more competitive games against each other. I think this is honestly a great club. Honestly, it's my best year's high school. All the kids I've met, all the environment, it's very friendly. It's it's a great, great thing we got going on. And as as a senior, I feel this sense of pride where I want to go out and play for this team and show kids who are coming up next to me that this is something they can go into. This is something they can progress. This is only gonna be my first year. So I'm, I just want to be the person that can show that this is a sport that everyone can get better at. And I want to come back to the Whistaken area and see this team that I played on and see again that pride from them succeeding. So thank you for your time.
Is the outside register online, Katie? There's no one with hands raised on Zoom. Okay, so we'll move on to our next in-person. Nathaniel, oh.
So I'll start. Hello, my name is Nathaniel and I'm a sophomore at the Whistaken High School. And I'm speaking today in hopes of gaining support for boys' high school volleyball team. And I want to start first by saying how this sport could open up many opportunities for different students. And students like me may only be interested in the sport volleyball, but they can't play because there's no team. A volleyball team could lead to more interactions between different students cultivating a great community. And I play for a volleyball club outside of school with students from other schools around us. And they, those students, those students speak highly of their program and the community they've created within it. It would be a great way to form bonds between student athletes. Most of my teammates in the club and fellow players in the club have high school teams. And I was disappointed to learn that WIS did not have a team. And Upper Dublin, CB West, CB South, CB East, North Penn and many more have a team, while WIS does not. And a volleyball team could drive student participation within our athletic community. Volleyball is also a great team sport because players depend on their teammates. Bringing this into the school could teach very students teamwork and how caring for each other leads to a better atmosphere both in and out of Whistaken High School. My brother Joseph and other students in the middle school also hope for a team because they love the sport. This can help support the future community of middle schools that will transition into high schools because of the lessons that they learn and the bonding that they get from other students. And my friend Reed and I both managed for varsity girls team this year. And we both loved the experience of the season and how let everyone make different types of relationships. And acknowledging this, a boys' team would be so much more better because we would see the girls' team play and how they would get along. And we would really like to see that happen this year. And this would just generally lead to a greater bonding with different people that we may not see. Thank you for your time.
Katie, is anyone registered online? No hands raised on Zoom. Okay. Typically, we only allow five speakers on any topic, but we only have one more registered on the boys' volleyball, so I'll allow it. Mitchell Harris.
Thank you. Great to be back. See everybody here. It's just been three weeks since I was here last time. I just want to thank everybody. This is a small group of parents and and students who have participated in the club and have a great interest, obviously, in adding volleyball as a varsity sport at Whistaken. I did want to go over a couple of things, the breakdown of sports at the high school. I know Title IX is sort of the, we'll call it the elephant in the room, but currently there is one additional girl's sport offering versus boys'. So on the girl's side, we have field hockey, volleyball and fall winter spirit. On the boys' only side, we have football and wrestling. And then the rest of the sport offerings at WIS are joint cross-country, track and field, soccer, lacrosse, swimming, water polo, basketball, tennis, golf and then softball, baseball. The one issue with cheer is that it is not a competing sport. It's not because the school doesn't offer it as an option. It's that both the coaches and the participants are concerned about honestly getting hurt. They just don't right now have the skills to do it. The coaches advise the players not to do it in consultation with the athletic director. And I don't think the players themselves are begging to actually have it as a competing sport, despite the fact that most neighboring schools that have cheer do. So I just want to point that out, that adding volleyball would have an equal number of sport offerings on the Whistaken Athletic website. Fall cheer, winter cheer is listed as a varsity sport. Obviously, I'm very passionate about volleyball beyond the fact that, you know, the rest of the grouping here is as well. We're nearing the deadline to make this happen for this spring. I know there's a lot of concern on the legal side, but I would ask you, did we face any lawsuits for mask wearing? The answer is no. It costs money for somebody to file a lawsuit, have to hire an attorney. That didn't happen on what I think we would all consider to be a really hot button topic for the district over the last couple of years. Adding a boys' sport to get people involved, this should be a no-brainer, frankly. I really hope you guys will consider this. Obviously, you're making some votes next week on items to add for the extracurricular offerings at the school. I would highly ask you to consider adding boys' volleyball onto that list and seriously consider adding it and voting it to move it forward. Deadline for spring sport, which volleyball is, I believe, is March 6. So we're getting, we're getting down to the deadline where student athletes have to submit medical forms. And we want to get things going. I guarantee you, this will be an incredible And we want to get things going. I guarantee you, this will be an incredible experience for student athletes within the district. We've got middle schoolers interested. This is not just a, you know, a one or two, three-year wonder. I guarantee you. This will be a really positive experience and this is something that the school district should do. Thank you.
Okay, anyone online? Okay, then our last in-person speaker is Melissa Garcia.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm not good at this. This is the first time I've ever done public speaking, but this is something that. Is going to impact my family as well as what seems to be the majority of the school district. Um, before I begin, I did have a question, which I just realized. While sitting here, that the survey percentages might not be right. Can I approach?
You can bring a document up. During this portion, we don't typically answer questions, but you certainly can handle it. Oh, you know what, actually, so we can hear you on the mic. Yeah.
I know, but I can't.
Do you want to hold on to your document and then give it to me?
Percentage is incorrect. For example, students after school activities. Actually, I want to do jobs. This is a big one for the kids. Um, it says 340 students, yes, it would impact. 214 unsure, 327 no. Then it says not applicable, 1125. So the total is 2,006. So wouldn't the not applicable be deducted from the full number since it doesn't apply to 1,225 students? If that's the case, then we're at 50% of students that this would affect just part-time jobs. Um, so I can't really point out the drastic numbers if the numbers are incorrect. Um, hardships for families. So I felt, I'm sorry, I'm very nervous. I'm like shaking in my skin right now. Um, I did want to point out the financial hardships for the families. 13%, 333 families. If you put one head of household on the bus, 333 people, that's seven school buses. School buses hold 48 total children or adults, two in each row. There's two rows on each side, 24 on each side, it's 48 total. So that's seven school buses of head of households that this is going to affect. I kind of wasted time walking up there. I shouldn't have did that. Um, the staff resigning. I don't think these numbers are correct either. Or the coaches, for example, which coaches are we willing to lose for our kids? We have it at, it says 3%, but I think the actual number is 17%. If 422 don't apply to the coaches.
My suggestion would be to put those questions with your attachment in an email and send that over to the board.
I think my, the biggest thing is we need to check the survey and make sure that these percentages are correct because I honestly. I don't think they are. And I think the numbers are drastically worse than what I thought when I first came up here.
Yes, I would suggest if you could send that over to us on our website, actually, there's a way you can email the whole board at once. You don't have to look up all of our email addresses. It's right on our website. Okay? Thank you. All right, and we do have one more person registered. Nobody's still online, right, Katie? Oh, you have two online now. Okay, so the next one is Christine. Okay, um, Christine, you can go ahead and mute yourself.
Hi, I'm Kate Krasnuski. I'm speaking on my mom's account, but I'm a 10th grader at Wasickin High School. And I do do sports and every season I play uh, water polo, I do swim and lacrosse. Uh, these time changes would affect me um, a lot as I don't have that much time at home. And um, making the end times go later will end up having me come home around 7:00, 7:30. And it won't give me that much time to do homework and it will. End up resulting in me getting the same amount of sleep as I would with the current times, which I don't think it's that much progressive. And um, along with that, I don't know how many other high schools um, in the area. And that like sports teams play do have the same start and end times. And um, with early dismissal, with getting to the other school for sports, I'd be missing. Way much more school than I am currently and even currently right now, missing school because the sports is a problem with um. Um, me and it does cause a lot of stress. And with the end times being pushed back, that would just create a lot more. So I don't know what um, solutions you guys have for that, but I just wanted that to be brought up. And like homework, when um, I do get home, it's just, I'll be staying up. Way more later than usually and I think the only way to secure. Um, students getting enough sleep would be to put limitations on homework. I don't think starting end times is going to change much. And with every like athlete and friend, even on non-athletes and people that do clubs and just regular students. Um, most of them that I have talked to aren't in favor, favor of this as it just changes everyone's whole routine. And yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you so much for those comments. Um, okay, next in-person, Carrie Foyne.
Hi, I'm Carrie Lern and I have two kids that study Greek. And um, one of them is a fifth grader and she has already shown um, a delay in her sleep pattern. And so I don't expect that to get better anytime soon. Um, and I just wanted to let you know that I'm in favor of changing the school. I'm pushing it back the start times and I know that this will be, this is controversial and potentially inconvenient for a lot of people. But I'm a firm believer in um, looking at the science and I'm doing what's best for the health of these um, students. Um, I also wanted to mention some of my um. Uh, fellow parents. I mentioned that their kids who are waiting for the bus or have to walk to school and high school, they're out in the dark at 6:30 AM. And um, that's not, and I don't think anybody wants that for their children. So I know that that is something that could be um, remedied by pushing the start, school start times. Um, and I know that the school district is doing a lot to try to make this as. You know, good as, as smooth the transition as possible. So I want to tell you how much I appreciate that you're doing all this hard work. And looking at the science. Um, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Carrie. All right, who's registered next?
Yes, I have two for on Zoom.
Okay, who's next?
So the next one is Darren Grossman.
And just for the next few speakers, just, you know, we, I did limit the number of speakers with regard to volleyball to the five, we allowed a six. So is this person, what is Darren, what is your topic?
Darren can unmute himself.
Talking about the school times.
Cool, okay, I can proceed. Thank you.
Okay, so um, I'm somebody, I have a daughter in first grade at Stony and I have another child who will be in kindergarten in September. In the district, um, I have a stay-at-home life, so it doesn't affect me personally that much, but I am very much opposed to changing the times of school. For several reasons. One, my daughter does like cheer after school where she's got to be there at four o'clock. You move the school back, I don't even know if she can get there on time. Maybe she has to give up an activity she likes, which then hurts her self-confidence. My daughter has confidence issues. Um, as far as the point of kids sleeping more, that's not the school district's job. That's the parent's job. If the district, I mean, if your kid isn't sleeping enough, put them to bed earlier. Um, you know, have the kid go to sleep earlier. Um, I, I don't see why the district is meddling in the household. Not to mention the extra cost for parents. I have somebody in my neighborhood who's the daughter, they have a high school kid and a first grader. You know, like there's extra cost in that, the kid gets some later, maybe there's a child care issue, they got a young kid at home, now they got to get out of work earlier. Uh, the surveys you guys have done have all definitively shown. That, that most people, you know, the majority were in favor of leaving it alone. And I heard an argument, which I don't know if, people don't know how to read surveys, says, well. You know, the majority picked to change it. That's not necessarily true because that makes an assumption. That everybody who voted for, say, an hour late would vote for 20 minutes late instead of leaving it alone. And you can't make that assumption. That's called a fallacy of logic. Um, you know, I just don't believe that it's in anybody's best interest to change the time. We've been doing things this way for a long time. They've worked. There's no evidence kids will sleep more. The science is not definitive on kids sleeping more. I've seen some studies say they do better. They're all, they're all flawed studies. If you actually look into them, they all have not enough data. You know, they're only evaluating just that factor without taking any other variables into account. Um, you know, and variables can change and can make things different. I, I encourage, you know, no change because. You know, everybody in this district is used to the schedule already. Parents plan their lives around this schedule. Parents plan their kids' after-school activities around the schedule. Parents plan their jobs in a lot of cases around being home at a certain time for their children or being, you know, home. At certain times, maybe the parent has to go to work and now all of a sudden they have to put their kid on the bus and now they're going to be late for work. They got to. Lose their job, change their job schedule. There's so many variables that I don't think the district is considering. And this is the first time I've ever attended a school board meeting, either on Zoom or in person. I usually work late on Monday nights, but I thought this was important. Um, to make my voice heard because I just think they're making a mistake if they change the times because I don't see any evidence. That's definitive enough to show that it has any benefit to anybody. And to me, the sleep argument's ridiculous because. The overwhelming majority of kids either just stay up 30 minutes later because they'll have to do their homework or an hour later do their homework. Or if they have sleep problems now, nothing says moving it will change that. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Katie, you said there's someone else registered? Okay, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
We have Jen R.
Hi, um, it's Jen Rappaport. I'm over in Lower Gwinnett Township. I was just given another call and again, this, this meeting as well. Um, to just ask you to please uh, take a look at the survey, not the survey, the poll, the poll results. Um, it's very, very, like as clear-cut as can be. That the majority of people that took the poll are looking for no change. Um, I'm really not really sure why you're still pushing this on everybody since. The majority of everybody polled has said, just leave this alone. Um, there's a lot of other things we could be spending time on, um, a lot of other things we could be spending resources on. And instead, we're going over and over and over this where it, it's becoming ridiculous now. Everybody that wanted to take the poll has taken the poll. Um, also the community should have a say in this too. I mean, not every resident of, you know, this school district is aware that this is even being considered. It's going to put impacts on everybody, everybody's taxes, everybody's schedule in the morning, um, after-school programs, everything. There's so many things to consider here. Um, I'm just really not sure why it continues to be uh, on the table here. You've put out surveys in the past, you've put up polls in the past and, you know, you go by what they say. And this time it's like, let's just ignore what the majority wants and let's try to force everybody to do this. So I just wish you would take a look and respect the results. Um, people have spoken, people have taken the poll and you should do what the people want to do. Uh, that's it.
Thank you for your comments. So we have nobody else in person.
Nobody else on Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom. All right, then our public comment period is complete.
Can I just say one thing real quickly? I'm not trying to engage you, just have a quick comment.
Sure.
To the, to the boys sitting there, I just want to say thank you for coming and like sharing your passion with us. Um, sports is also incredibly important to me. I know you know that. Um, and i- if it were up to us, I think we'd just say, yeah, let's do it. But we, we just have to hear from the solicitor, like we're, we are, I, I don't want to speak for everyone. I'm on your side, of course. I want this to happen for you. It's just like, what are we talking legally? How can we make it work? That's it. Like, I just want you to know that. Thank you, boys.
I want to thank our families for coming out as well and for all the students that spoke with us this evening. Thank you for doing that. And you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting if you'd like to, or if anybody would like to leave at this point, I'll give you a moment here to step out. The rest of the meeting will be very exciting though.
Hey, hey, um. For, for the boys volleyball group, before you guys leave, I just did want to note that. Uh, later in our agenda, under the board solicitor report, there is an informational item going to be given by our solicitor on Title IX. So uh.
You can tune in at home.
You can listen to it at home or you, I'm just letting you know that it is on the agenda. Uh, I myself um, want to understand more about the Title IX obstacles that may be at play here. Because I think um, like um, Deanne said. I'm very much in support of adding another sport and in particular boys volleyball. Uh, I think we as board members there just need to get a better understanding of what are the trade-offs or potential obstacles with Title IX. And I believe our solicitor is going to give us more details on that a little bit later.
And actually, I know I just told you could leave, but actually, so I'm, we have no, nothing under the board president report or the superintendent report. So we are actually, or the assistant superintendent report. So we are actually at the Title IX report. So if you'd like to sit down and listen.
Better sit down and listen to this momentous report. First of all, I'd like to comment on a couple of things and some misnumbers about Title IX. First of all, the major concern is not a lawsuit from the community. Title IX is administered by the United States Department of Education Office for Civil Rights. And they do audits, just like the Internal Revenue Service on school entities throughout the country. And they determine whether or not your, your particular district is in compliance with uh, Title IX. And in fact, uh, while not, in fact, uh, the Wasickin School District. Some time ago was the subject matter to an expansive Title IX investigation. So it is an item of concern and we do not control whether. The Department of Education under the Biden administration will seek to audit us under the circumstances. In much the same way that you don't control whether the Internal Revenue Service will elect to pick you to be one of the lucky people to be. Audited on your income tax returns. So for that reason, we want to approach this carefully. And Title IX, uh, unlike some of the analyses, uh, we heard in terms of. Uh, trying to match up one sport to another, that isn't how Title IX works. I'll just give you very briefly the basics, uh, the basics of it because it's highly based in regulations. So the starting point for the assessment of a school's compliance with Title IX. Is to evaluate whether the school is effectively accommodating the athletic interests and abilities of its female enrollment. This is considered to be component one to determine whether a school is complying with Title IX. And examines whether the school provides sufficient sports offerings and sports participation and opportunities for females. In order to demonstrate compliance with what is known as component one under the regulations. A school must meet any of the three alternatives to the state three-prong test. I'm going to focus on a couple of them to say the calculations that we are currently involved with under the circumstances. Prong one deals with substantial proportionality. Under prong one, the district needs to compute whether the athletic participation rate of females. Is substantially proportional to the enrollment percentage of females. Title IX does not provide a strict statistical test for how close is close enough. But the Office for Civil Rights, um, and several courts has generally found a difference of less than 5%. To be within what we call the safe harbor of safe proportionality. So we're looking to see whether we fit within that calculation. There are also two additional calculations for prong one. What is, one is known as the unduplicated measure, I don't make these up, and the duplicated measure. The duplicated measure test is the more definitive test. Both calculations need to be made and we're working on them as we speak and should have an answer shortly. On the unduplicated measure, you need to count all of the females and males participating in varsity, JV, sophomore and freshman sports. At the high school per the rosters from the first date of competition. From the total number of athletes, you must also calculate the number of female athletes and male athletes. Furthermore, you have to calculate the number of students at the high school and the percentage of female and male students at the high school. The number of female students participating in high school sports is divided by the. The number of female students participating in high school sports is divided by the total number of males and females participating in high school sports and multiplied by 100 to give you the female rate. The female rate is subtracted from the percentage of females attending high school. And if that number is more than 5%, once again, the safe harbor number, the district is outside of the safe harbor and likely is in voli- violation of Title IX. So we're doing these calculations and there's a few more other calculations that need to be done. It isn't simply whether females and males have equal sports and just looking at the agendas under the circumstances. So we are doing this. We hope to have an answer shortly. Uh, and, uh, I think you've heard a number of board members express their personal desire to see this happens. But they want to see whether we meet these strict statistical tests. So we do appreciate the comments that we heard today. We're going through the numbers. Candidly, what's taking us long, we have, we had to, just like with surveys, we had to, uh, correct and, uh, get more precise numbers under the circumstances to be sure we're analyzing this correctly. We've been working closely with the athletic director in order to accomplish this and we hope to have an answer very soon on the subject. But I did want to say that these are not just simplistic kinds of tests that we look at it. And it's not based upon a fear that a community member is going to institute suit under Title IX. So we want to be sure we meet the statistics. Hopefully we will. And then, uh, you could go through the next step of, uh, the processes and getting the board approval to move forward.
Thank you, Jeff. And, um, so the calculation that we're going to be doing, I assume that calculation as well as the data, our actual numbers we shared out with the board. So we have that information?
Uh, eventually, yes, when they're done. Yes, I, I'm just saying you'll be fascinated to read it.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that calculation.
We've, we, we have the cure for insomnia and we could deal with your sleeping issue with your students at the same thought as we deal with this issue too.
Jeff, can I ask a question quickly? If we happen to fall just outside that safe harbor number, are there things we can do to remedy that? I.e. somehow add a female team or limit the roster of certain male teams or increase, I don't know, is there, what are, what are some tricks that people have used in the past to get this done?
I think maybe the first step should be, let's look at the numbers and then we can go to step two, but some of your ideas are good ideas.
Uh, Jeff, you referenced the fact that Wissickin was subject of a Title IX, I guess, audit or review. Um, do you know, do you remember when that was and what were, I guess, the penalties applied if any in that scenario?
It was prior to my time as being solicitor, so I only know about, about reading it in the newspaper. But there was quite the stir in the school community in the region when that was going on. And as a result, I think there needed to be some modifications to, uh, offerings for female students at that time.
Were, are there like financial penalties that would normally be associated with schools being out of compliance with Title IX?
Uh, usually no financial penalties, uh, directly. If we, uh, find out and we're the subject matter of an audit and we are non-compliant in addressing those remedies, the federal government reserves the right to conduct a hearing to eliminate federal funding for the school district.
So, so Zep, Zep, I know you had a visible audible reaction to that. Um, just recognize that federal funding makes up, I think, less than 1% of the district's funding. So the, yeah, I guess depending on the funding of your individual district, it could be potentially very extreme. Then the final question, Jeff, is,
How much is our federal funding?
It's, it's millions of dollars. So, you know, I, I, I would love never to take federal money because it would also
Again, this is, this is, this would be an extreme, this would be an extreme outcome.
That if we would be intransigent and not addressing
Right.
the issues, then we run the risk of that kind of situation.
I, I can't imagine that this board and this administration would ever let it get to that.
I agree.
Um, so, but Jeff, the final question, I know you and the team have been working on trying to nail down some of these calculations at the safe harbor provision of Title IX. Will you be able to, um, have a response back to the board prior to our next meeting when we're going to be voting on the extracurricular activities list?
I am hoping to unless we, uh, find out some of the numbers don't, uh, we, we thought we would be ready for this evening, but we weren't because of some of the numbers that we came up with. We're hoping to, but I, I can't guarantee it at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, if, if they're not done with the calculations, could we vote in advance next week so that they can get started if the answer is okay from Jeff? Like, just a provision to ensure that they're not delayed? Because then our next board meeting wouldn't be until like basically their deadline.
Basically, assuming all the numbers come in, can we preemptively vote in favor of starting the team?
Yeah, just because I don't want a calculation to hold up the process.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to understand you saying that before the, if, if for some reason we don't have the numbers, you want to vote to authorize the team subject to, uh, the numbers coming in that we are in the safe harbor. We could theoretically do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that would be, that's a great idea because, uh, there is some urgency with, um, the start of spring sports coming up around the corner. Um, and our next voting meeting isn't going to be until like the beginning of March. Yeah, but I think that's a, that's a great idea for next week. If we, if we don't get the response from Jeff and his team prior to that meeting.
I have faith in you, Jeff. I'm ready for those numbers.
Rooting for you, Jeff.
Uh, it's not just me. No, it, it, part of the issue was about the, uh, quality of the numbers we were getting, uh, from the district.
All right. So hopefully we'll be able to get those numbers over to Jeff so we can do that calculation before next meeting. All right. Any other? No comment. Wait. Any other comments or questions? No? All right. Um, oh, go ahead.
I would just like to say, uh, nice job to the student athletes here. You are representing what we hope to have here in West Nation. So thank you all for being out here.
Now you're free to leave. Unless, again, meeting is very exciting. You can stick around, but if not, you're free to leave. All right. Uh, moving on, we will go now to our board secretary report. Wade.
Thank you. There's, uh, no informational items and at the next meeting we will be requesting approval of the January 9th, January 17th and January 23rd, uh, meeting minutes, which are regular board meeting, uh, REAC and the policy meeting, uh, minutes. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Wade. Any questions or comments? All right. Then we'll move on to our board treasurer report. Wade.
Thank you. There's no informational item and at the next meeting we'll be requesting acceptance, admitting, uh, the treasurer's report for December 31st, 2022, uh, per document 11 dash one.
Thank you again. Any comments or questions? All right. Thanks again, Wade.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to our human resources report. Danielle.
Good evening. Tonight there are no informational items. For your review, our six action items under 12B of the human resources report. The first three action items include a rescinded position, uh, appointments, a leave of absence, a co-curricular postseason pay and extracurricular changes and volunteer additions. Action item four is two new extracurricular activities, one at the middle school and one at the high school. Item five is the spring extracurricular activities for the 22, 23 school year. And finally, the sixth item is the 12-month employee holiday schedule submitted each year at this time. Um, that concludes my report. Thank you for your consideration.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, questions?
So I'm really excited to see that we have a new director of buildings and grounds listed. That's very exciting. Um, will we get to meet him? Will, will there be an introduction like we've had in the past with others? Cool. Excellent. And then for your 12 dash five, it seems like there's a number of vacancies for coaches for some, um, some sports. What happens if we don't have a coach by, I don't know what date? Does, are we in jeopardy of some of these sports not being able to be held potentially?
Uh, yeah, uh, certainly. We definitely need a coach, uh, to run the sport. Um, when it comes down to the wire, typically we can convince someone to do it because they don't want to see that happen. So, um, we do ask for internal, um, we want our, you know, obviously our professionals, uh, to be able to take these positions. Um, we then look, we do look to support staff at times and then also we would look outside if we needed to. Um, that's typically where, um, we can sort of grab, grab somebody who has some experience to be a coach. So.
Thanks. I'm going to keep my fingers crossed that we don't have to not do some sports. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Danielle, thank you so much. Danielle. We'll move on now to our communications committee report. Zep.
So later school start and end times. Novel, novel idea. Um, you know, on next week's, so then a jet, next week we have on the agenda that we would be voting on three options. I actually, um, would like to talk about some things that I've been thinking about and grappling with. Um, you know, we currently have many gaps to really feel strongly about this very big but very important decision. That being said, as a school board member, I feel that we have a responsibility to our students to continue investigating this endeavor. Maybe it's not going to happen for the 23, 24 school year. I, I, I think that's a given. But I do want this to be considered for the 24, 25 school year. Since 2014, there has been a number of different agencies that have come forward, including the American Pediatric Association, the American Medical Association, the CDC, as well as many, many, many others who've made the recommendation that school start should start for secondary schools after 8:30 a.m. In October of 2019, the Joint State Government Commission had a state resolution number 417. And the purpose of this resolution was, it was obvious that public health officials and the medical community at large have declared that a public health crisis of epidemic proportions is affecting American adolescents. Most adolescents do not get enough sleep, leading to a myriad of mental, behavioral and physical effects as well as pu- public safety concerns. Adolescence sleep needs are driven by a temporary biological shift in sleep onset and wake times that occur concurrently with the onset of puberty and ends in early adulthood. Early school start times run counter to the biological condition and contribute substantially for adolescence sleep deprivation. In this advisory committee, this, um, recommendation, they're asking Pennsylvania school districts consider studying the advisability of changing their secondary school start times to improve the health and welfare of their students. This was released on October 17, 2019 in Pennsylvania. Additionally, this is not a PA issue. It's not a Wissickin issue. This is a national issue. Um, if you go on to startschoollater.net and I've spent the entire weekend, weekend doing a, a lot of research, it is very clear to me that although we posted this information on our website, put out newsletters, had Zooms, the gross majority of our community does not understand why this is important for our students. Additionally, there are many elements that need further due diligence. Busing, childcare, athletics, teachers, school times, clubs, after-school work for our kids, to our tech students, and that's just a few. The great news is that this is not unique to Wissickin. All schools who made this change grappled with the same issue. And there are a great amount of schools who we can lean in on and learn from. I personally think Radnor is a great example of successful change who've taken on this initiative since 2019. I've heard everybody say, oh, just get the kids to bed earlier. But the science says biology for these kids doesn't work that way. Oh, we're cuddling our kids because we're making it so easy for them. Well, you know what? No one here would put a baby in a car without a, a car seat. But that wasn't a mandate until June of 2016. Now everybody puts their kids in, in car seats. Oh, it's too expensive. If you go on to this website, you will find school examples that had, in fact, found efficiencies. But even if we can't find efficiencies and this will cost us more money with our buses, if you take that cost per kid for all of our kids in our school district, that costs about $40 per child per year. The cost of a psych visit alone is more than that. This is the greatest intervention a school board can make from an equity perspective that will have the biggest impact for all of our students regardless. It would be irresponsible for us to, for us to vote no and let this go. I think it is our responsibility to have our administration really dig into the details about what do we do with our athletes? What do we do about our school times? I think, um, I will like to propose, if anybody would agree, that I wrote this down. So I say it correctly, that we make the motion that we adjourn this vote next week on school start time until next year. And this will take in place for the 2024, 2025 school year.
So motion's been made?
Yeah, I will second. I also have comments to make.
Well, before we, we go on, is this motion on the agenda?
It's on the agenda for us to vote for the three items.
13B2.
Okay, so it is on the agenda. Okay.
But it's written intentionally, I guess, vague. It's about a motion for approving the start, school start end times.
Zep, uh, could I just have clarification? Are you proposing this motion for tonight? Are you proposing that this is what we vote upon next week?
That is what I'm proposing.
Which, which one?
I'm sorry, the latter, that we vote, that we make the change, that we will be voting instead of for next year, but for the following year.
Thank you.
But you're making the motion to adjourn that vote this evening, not for next?
If I have to, I don't know what the protocol is. You tell me what the protocol is and I will follow it.
Okay. And the way you work your agendas right now, uh, the board president and the superintendent developed the agenda. Okay, so we don't necessarily need to have a motion per se if the board president and the, um, uh, and the superintendent agree to reflect that in the agenda to change the effective date because as a practical matter, it couldn't be implemented anyway.
And just to be clear, we wouldn't be voting that we would definitely do this for next year. We're just saying that we're not doing it next year, but the administration will continue to pursue this and do further due diligence in order for us to understand if this is a possibility for our schools for 24, 25 school year.
So in effect, you're asking the administration to make some type of report and recommendation after a period of study? Is that what you're asking for?
No, I think, so currently we will be voting on this next week, whether or not to change a school start time. And I believe what Zep is proposing is that we move that vote a year out from now to continue doing research over the course of the next year into certain areas and at that point in time have the yes, no vote.
Okay, so we're not even voting to change the start times. We're preparing to prepare to change the start times, uh, to get, uh, information on that. Is that what the intention is?
Adjourning the motion. So we're going to adjourn the motion that's on for next year.
Well, then we could take it off the, you, you don't need to, to take it, table the motion. All you're basically saying is that we're going to defer taking action on this until later time when it gets further studied by the district.
Yeah, so that it could, the agenda next week could be bolded to have that cross off and a new, a different, the way you articulated, when you articulated in its place. That would, that could be. That would, that could be done bold and whenever there's a change between the work session and the voting meeting. The, the agenda for the latter is, is changed with bold or strike through to reflect the change. So we could take this one off and put the one that's proposed on for February sixth.
But you're saying we don't even necessarily need that motion because we can just choose not to have it on the agenda.
It could be that simple and that ongoing, there's a discussion as to what the district wants to do with respect to this issue because the immediacy of the concern has changed because it's one year in advance.
So before we make that decision to remove it from the agenda, let's have some discussion as a board to see how everyone feels about this because I don't want to unilaterally make that decision and other board members wanted to actually vote. So.
Wait, wait, wait.
Marshall, go ahead.
Then before anybody, because I know that there are board members chomping at the bit to make a comment about this. I would simply caution this. If the idea is to push it out a year because we believe we don't have enough information to make a reasoned decision, then I think that comment on that may not be appropriate because if the comment is either people don't understand or the reason we should be doing one thing or the other, then it doesn't sound like you're simply looking for more research to come up with the proper response. It sounds like we're trying to push one or the other. And that I don't believe is the purpose of why we want to move it tonight. You're not saying because if you're saying simply, I want to push it because I didn't get the answer I liked the first time, I'm not sure that's appropriate. And starting to comment tonight, I'm not sure advances the ball or gives the, it certainly gives the impression that when I hear things like people don't understand, I think they understood what they did. We may not like what they did, but I'm not sure we want to comment on that.
No, we don't have all the answers, Marshall. We do not have the answers on the busing.
Exactly. Then that should be the. Then that's fine. I agree with you. If, if the issue is we don't believe we have enough information to vote on this right now, I have no problem with that. But if tonight a bunch of, you know, board members are going to talk about the pros and cons of the, of the efficacy of this, then I don't think that advances as to what you are trying to achieve. And I think we should be careful about that.
Zepi, you wanted to respond?
We need more information for us to know whether or not we can do this. We don't have answers on truly what's going to happen with busing, with childcare, with after-school activities, with athletes, with our school times. There's still too many open questions. It would be irresponsible for us to move forward with this without having that information.
And I'm agreeing in that sense, if that's what we're saying.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is if we're going to start to comment tonight about pros and cons of school start times, that I don't believe that's appropriate. If we're simply moving things.
My opinion of what I feel is, is my feeling.
Well, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think I assume I'm reading the room properly, but that there's consensus that implementing later school start times this fall is, is a non-starter at this point, right? So if we were going to vote on the motion as written, we would have a vote and we'll probably have the majority of people say no, and it would fail. So, and that's the way I'm leaning, and that's the way I would vote if we were voting on this as written. At the same time, I don't like the idea that then the idea and the concept just dies or falls into the abyss to be forgotten. So I think that's where it's sort of the tension is, is that I, I don't think we're in a position to implement it for this fall, for a whole host of reasons. But what I'm struggling with is that if we say no for next year, which is, I think is the right decision, I don't, again, I, I don't want us to never revisit this or just like lose sight of it. So what I'm trying to figure out is how do we like flesh this out? Because to be honest, when we talked about doing this as a, like sort of a two-year process a few years back of looking at the latest school start times, year one was supposed to be like do some research and figure out pros and cons, et cetera, learn from other districts, et cetera. Year two is about putting together an implementation plan for how we would do it for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We never actually got to part two. We kept doing the research and kind of talking and so it's, it's very, it's conceptual at this point. And without specific answers to how we're going to manage or mitigate the situation with North Monaco students, after-school practices, athletic teams, games, before-school, after-care at the elementary, middle school level, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All that stuff, none of that has been fleshed out yet. And I think part of it maybe is the thought that, well, we want to get the green light from the board before we work out the details. But in reality, I think what we need is like all the details so we can have a clear up or down vote of whether or not it's feasible to implement here in, in Wissahicken. Clearly, we're not there yet, so it has to be a no for this fall. But could we somehow make it a goal that a year from now, rather than voting on later school start times as a concept, we're voting on an implementation plan for later school start times that makes proposals for how we're going to do busing, makes proposals for how we're going to manage scheduling with North Monaco, for home games versus away games, for athletic practices, for kids who have jobs after school, et cetera, et cetera. So in doing my own research, there actually are very few schools that have made later school start times to eight thirty or later. There's only two that I, that I've actually seen. Radnor is one. Garnet Valley in Delaware County is another one. The dozens of other schools that you read about and get press and get positive boost about it, all they did was they bumped their school times maybe twenty minutes, thirty minutes. Based on the research, eight thirty is the, is the minimum bar where you start getting the benefits of the circadian sleep cycle, et cetera. So to me, it's only worth doing it if we're going to do it in an hour. Twenty minutes, thirty minutes, it's, it's not worth, worth the effort and the shift, right? But nevertheless, there are two schools that have done it and have had, had it in place for several years now. They must have come up with answers and specific details to address all these concerns, which I'm sure were common in their school communities. So what I, I guess would propose is in addition to a vote on later school start times for this fall, which I think is, at least in my view, a clear no, but some kind of additional motion to hold us accountable as a board and in particular the administration to come back to the table, let's say it this time next year, with a more detailed implementation plan of putting later school start times in place for the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five school year. That takes into account what's been done, in particular Radnor and Garnet Valley. There are lessons learned, strategies and tactics they used. You know, again, and flushes that out. There's a lot of time to do that research and I think a lot of time in the fall for us to like have more in-depth discussions about the specifics and the logistics of it so that by the time we get to a board meeting in January, twenty-two, twenty-four, we can make a much better informed decision on whether or not to move forward.
Thank you, Joe. Other board members? Oh, go ahead.
Yes, I'm very against staying stagnant as a district. I feel like even though the majority is saying that we shouldn't do it because it's easy to say we should do it based on the negative effects we've seen, we can ignore the minority. But also, I personally have been against changing the school start time because it does create an equity issue as we've like discussed before for many people. I don't have to like go over the cons again, but I feel like to just make a hasty decision or to just ignore this issue after like the vote or anything would just be probably as harmful as just like changing it super abruptly. So I feel like this should not die out and, but it shouldn't be made in a hasty decision. So I feel like this should continue to be a conversation because there is science proving that students are sleep deprived. I'm sleep deprived myself, so I, I mean, it won't be an effect, well, I'm assuming, when, but before I graduate. But I feel like for the future of this district, we cannot stay stagnant. So regardless of what the vote is, we have to keep talking about this in the future, and I really hope that it, it does make a change either way.
Thank you for those remarks.
I actually have something to add. This also won't affect me at all. So really, I, I don't know what that means for you, just because I'm graduating this year. But the one thing I do want to point out, like this doesn't have to do with my opinion on it, whatever, is that what I've been hearing, just for some public perspective, just because we released the information from the polls and that data of what the whispers of what I'm hearing is that, oh, the votes are in, people voted a certain way, and people don't understand why this conversation is still happening. And so that's just to put it out there, I'm not saying I feel one way or another about it. But if we continue this conversation, which I don't think is a bad idea, there has to be some acknowledgement that we heard the public, we understand that people feel a certain way right now. I think we have to acknowledge that because if we don't, people think that we're just pushing a certain agenda without regarding their feelings. And I'm overwhelmingly hearing that from students, from parents, from teachers. Just because, I mean, I get it, like you took, we took a public vote, we took a poll, it just, I get from that perspective that it feels like what else could we possibly be doing? But I know there is more that we can do with research and such like that. So just an acknowledgement that like we hear this is the district and, you know, the teachers, the students, the families, just to acknowledge their feelings, I think, would make people feel a little more comfortable because, I mean, we've been talking about this for so, we've had so many public comments about it. I think it's very clear that people feel very strongly. And so just to acknowledge that, I think would give people a little bit of comfort.
Thank you. Other board members?
I mean, I'll piggyback off that. I mean, I do acknowledge that this change is hard and that people do feel very against it. And I understand some of the reasons why. For me personally, I think I would feel very anxious and unsure about changing the schedule if I didn't have the answers to what would happen to my student athlete or what would happen to my childcare situation or what would happen to my child's job after school. Like I would want those answers. And if I didn't get them, I would simply say, let's not do this because the devil you know is easier or is better than the devil you don't know, right? That is what, it's easier. But what I, what I would say to that is sometimes doing the, the right thing for students is not always going to be or just the right thing in general is not always going to be a popular thing sometimes. Although I do think we have a fair amount of support in this district for continuing to look at this. And like Zepi said, this is not a Wissahicken thing. This is not, we're doing this and no one else is. I, I do believe this is the future of schools. We've set this arbitrary time and it's been like this forever. And why? I don't know. So why can't it be later? You know, what Radnor did, Radnor had a sixty-five page plan. I'm going to email it to everyone after the meeting, or maybe Zepi already has. And they went through every single scenario and every single thing, including, I know this is a big issue in the community, facilities use. They optimized their high school practices to say you still had to be done by this time because communities need to get in here and they can't stay, community kids have to get in and they can't stay up later either. They looked at their schedule and they cut homeroom down from twelve minutes to six minutes. They shaved off non-instructional minutes of the day to optimize their schedule. And that's the only way I think we can be successful. And that's part of the reason we can't implement this next year. But the other part is that I just don't think we have the right answers in place to some of the questions. I sat through all of the town halls. We didn't have an expert speaking at any of the town halls. Radnor brought in two. We just had a lot of questions and concerns that were met with, thank you for your concern. Thank you. That's a good, that's a good concern. That's a good question. And I felt like I kept waiting to hear the answers to those questions and I just never got them. And so that would be very disconcerting to me. And, and it is as a parent not knowing. Now, my kids are in elementary school, so this doesn't affect them quite yet. But I was a high schooler myself and I know what it's like to be chronically tired. I would have jumped at the chance of getting a half hour or hour more asleep. It, it's not, it's not healthy. And, you know, what we need to do is look at the science, look at Radnor's playbook and say, can we do, can we do this? And if the answer is still no, fine. But we need to know if, that we really tried to implement solutions before just throwing in the towel.
Thank you, Dan. Other comments?
I just have a, a question. It's probably a weight question. If we were able to resolve our busing issues to a point where we had enough capacity to do one run in the morning and the afternoon, rather than separate runs for elementary and, and the upper levels, and then shift our, our start times back to where our elementary start times are currently. Is that a possibility? Has that been considered?
If I, if the way you worded the question, I think I have to say yes. But the way you worded the question, I don't think is possible. So you said, I think if we were able to get all the buses and have one run, would it work? And the answer is yes. But that in and of itself is the problem. We, we have fifty, say five double runs right now. So for us to implement one time, if I understand the correction, the, the question correctly, just move the high school, middle school back and run all the buses at one time, I would need a hundred and ten buses. I think we would have great difficulty unless we just blew out of the water the amount that we would pay our bus drivers on a rate per hour because we would have to attract bus drivers for like a one and a half hour timeframe. And then they wouldn't be working otherwise, if I understand the question correctly.
Yes, that was the question. But I'm wondering if, given potential for having the traditional year to sort this out. And I know we're under contract with the current bus provider. But could there be a possibility to hire a second provider where we have more than one?
Yeah, I, 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 I get it. If, I guess what I'm going is, I'm thinking of, I'm the bus driver, right? And if I had the ability to go to Methacton and work a three-hour shift and get paid, you Wissahicken are going to have to make it attractive to me if I'm now working an hour and a half shift and that's all I'm doing. So I would think we could do that, but that would be an incredible amount of money that we would have to offer. Assuming we could find the bus drivers, but if we throw an awful lot of money on the table, I think we could do it, but it would be an incredible amount of money. So. So yes, I think we could do that and, but it would be very, very, very expensive. Because I think unless I don't understand or somebody else cleverer than me is thinking this through off the top of their head, we would be creating very, very short shifts for bus drivers. And that's, that's their livelihood in, in a, in a current situation.
So I don't think this is the right setting to be trying to work out all the nitty-gritty details. I mean, I think what's on the table for us to vote is whether or not to do later school start times in the fall. I think there's value in, in having an up or down vote on that, just to be definitive about it. And then secondarily, and this is part of what my comments earlier is, is there some kind of motion or some kind of thing that we can put in place to not let the matter completely fade away? Right? So that's, I guess, my.
The one issue that I think we need to be clear is that we're in a municipal election year and we cannot bind a subsequent board on this decision. So you could theoretically vote on this in September, let's say after getting new additional information and say you want to make these changes effective July one twenty, you know, for the twenty-two, twenty-four school year. And you will not be able to bind a subsequent board as you can on a collective bargaining agreement on this issue. So the new board could be seated in December, they hear about this, or this becomes even an election issue per se. And they may say, I don't want to enforce that. There's no way we can bind a subsequent board to go this route.
So, so Jeff, I think, you know, part of what I was contemplating was a formal vote on this, like in the January timeframe of twenty-two, twenty-four. So it'd be after board elections and whatever the board is in place will be in place. It also gives the administration more time to get, get these questions answered. When I say questions, it's not about like the science or whatever. It's about the operational logistical questions about putting this into place. All these bus challenges and issues, again, trying to figure it out on our own at this table, to me could be better served, like talking to Radnor. They, they dealt with the same issues, I'm sure. Garnet Valley, I'm sure they dealt with the same issues. They had the same complaints, concerns and fears from parents. How did they deal with it, right? And that's what I want to find more information, rather than just us sort of like theorizing at the table here. So, and I think it's going to take some time for the administration to do that. So I don't think it's appropriate that we revisit or vote for next year as early as September. Again, if it's a year from now, that's one full year from now in January. If the board elections will have happened and if there's new board members or different members in place that will already be there and that group then as a whole can decide. And that group then as a whole can decide on whether or not and how we're going to go about implementing this for fall of twenty twenty-four. But yeah, so maybe that, maybe that's not another action item for us to address, but then something that we as a board annually establish goals for the superintendent. Um, that could be something that we discuss as, you know, a goal for next year. You know, something to consider.
For Zed, I see your head. Your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm really in full support of getting additional information and not starting this for this school year. Um, and I agree with what Joe just said, like it, we can't really discuss any, any settle now, but just to move forward with making, making it so that we just don't vote. So I'm in full agreement with looking at additional information.
Are there any other comments from board members?
Just me. Yeah, um, to answer the, the point or the question about why we're still looking at this. Uh, for me, the, the, the science and the reason we started looking at it to begin with is still very valid. I think our students have a lot to benefit from um, with the later school start time. We failed to make that point aggressively enough, I think, uh, and making it insult it such that everyone agrees. One uh, point that I think is important that, that hasn't been emphasized enough is that the students that stand to benefit the most uh, from this, from the research that I've read. Are students that now suffer the most from the inequities in our district and in other districts. So from that point of view, I, I think it's more urgent. And I agree, we do need to be looking at solutions for the problems we had or will have. I think there are probably no problems out there that we won't find solutions for. So hopefully, uh, if, if we can't move forward for the coming school year, then um, that it will definitely stay on the agenda for the twenty twenty-four. And I would also hope that we have a series of discussions about how we're going to meet the various challenges that we have ahead of us. Thank you.
And Zepi, this is something that the communications committee could continue, correct?
A hundred percent. And I think um, something I could work with Jim and team to figure out what's an appropriate kind of way to look at this with re, like with milestones, dates, agenda items, so that, you know, we understand what we're looking at, what the options are or not. And what does that mean for the community? Absolutely.
I think it's a good plan. Fortunately, we have a ton of data now from our community about concerns and issues they see.
Oh, yeah.
So we can go through that information and come up with solutions. And um, yeah, the president from Radnor did speak with both of us. And I think she could probably provide us a lot of insight into what Radnor did. And um, I appreciate that Dan's going to forward us that plan from Radnor, so we can hopefully go through that as well to look for some solutions to these issues. So great. I'm glad the committee's on board for continuing this.
Great. So then how are we going to address this for next week? Like that I'm not clear on. So.
Sounds like we can.
It sounds like we're all aligned that we're not ready for next year. But are we actually putting something that we're voting on for next week that we will be voting on it for the following year?
It sounds like we can just take it off our agenda. Yeah, we could.
You can, you can remove it from the agenda. I mean, it's that, that's simple, but um.
My only hesitation, so Jeff, my concern is if we take it off the agenda with nothing concrete about us making this an agenda item for the administration for the following year, that it gets lost.
So every spring we have that opportunity to discuss with Jim different goals for the following year, like Joe mentioned. So I think that that would be a great opportunity for us as a board to bring this up as a goal for the following year. And uh, you know, as well as all the other goals, we're going to set for Jim for next year. But certainly we could continue if, if that's something we all are in alignment about, that we want to have him continue to look into this. I think that's appropriate time to, to put that down in writing. What are your thoughts on that? I, I have a concern about it though.
There's an understanding that the administration will continue to work on this between now and the spring.
That's right.
Because that's my hesitation, because the work needs to continue right now. We cannot wait for the spring. We need to start getting these questions and answers and steps that we need to go through are vast. And they're going to take time and we need to start this tomorrow. So that's why I feel pressed that we have something solid that is understood that we're working towards.
My thought is the communications committee, you mentioned meeting with Jim and setting some deadlines. I think Jim understands this is something that's important to the board. And we're, we want to continue to look into this. So I think it's important for the communications committee to meet with, well, Jim attends your meetings. But set down deadlines for him at that time for how you want to see this handled. And then we can certainly, again, as a board, when we have that opportunity to talk to him about goals, set this as a goal for the following year. Because it currently is one of your goals.
It could be one of the district's goals.
Yeah. Thank you, Jeff. Um, so any other thoughts or questions?
Um, so like a lot of the sentiments I've seen that are saying like, why are we still talking about this? Is a lot of the fact that like we are devoting a lot of our attention to it, which is important, definitely. But there are also many issues in our district that a lot of people feel are not getting the same attention. Um, personally, I think the achievement gap is a very big thing that we, I feel like we don't really devote a lot of attention to. Um, and also just like internal improvements. So I do believe this is a very pressing issue that should be investigated, but I also think that I just want to, I'm a little afraid that like a lot of the conversation will kind of stray away from like all of the issues that we've been having and like bringing up this new issue. So this is important, but I also want to make sure we hold value in a lot of the other issues that are being raised in the district.
Thank you for that point. And that is, um, I think, in fact, that is also a district goal. Um, we have a number of district goals and um, I don't think it's worded as achievement gap on our district goals. But that is, one of our goals is just worded differently. Um, any other comments? All right. Well, I'm getting the feeling that we're not really prepared to vote next week based on these comments. So my thought is we'll take it off the agenda for next week and continue the conversation.
There will be one item though, under communications, that we will be voting on next week, and that is our website. There, as I've been updating the team um, in the last couple of months, we've, we're at the point where we've made a final decision. And we have to sign that contract. It's listed under item thirteen B one. And um, the costs associated for this five-year contract are listed in um, section thirteen one. I think I listed that incorrectly earlier. Thirteen. If I said fifteen, I apologize. Thirteen.
Okay. Any comments or questions on those other items? All right, Seenan, thank you for that report. We'll now move on to our Work Element Technology Committee report.
There are no informational items, but Dr. Dewan, you have court cue.
Yes, thank you. We have six action items, for which we'll seek approval on February sixth. Um, for item fourteen B one, we will seek ratification for the boys and girls indoor track teams to attend the Ocean Breeze Invitational, which is occurring this Saturday and Sunday, February fourth and fifth. Um, for item fourteen B two, we will seek approval for all of the extended field trips and high school clubs. Uh, for the high school clubs and teams for the remainder of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um, these are pending qualification in those competitions outlined, as outlined in document fourteen two. For item three, we're going to be seeking ratification for outplaced educational services and tuition costs for four students listed in document fourteen dash three. For item four, we will seek approval for a payment to the MCIU, the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, for the Age of Beginner Services for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. That's outlined in document fourteen dash four. As a reminder, the MCIU Age of Beginner Program costs for students who are school age, but their caregivers and parents decide to retain their child at the MCIU in the Early Intervention Program, so they choose not to enroll in the kindergarten program for the upcoming school year. Um, later in this year, the board is going to see another request for approval for the remaining balance for the program for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So this is just for the first payment. For item fourteen B five, we'll seek approval for an additional payment to the MCIU to cover the balance of the shared services cost plan. Um, in May twenty twenty-two, the board may recall approving an initial projected amount for the cost plan. Um, and so next week we'll be seeking approval for the board to, um, so that we can cover the additional amount as outlined in document fourteen dash five. And for item six, we'll seek approval of a two-year agreement with Child and Family Focus for this school year and next school year. The cost of this agreement will be covered by an approved grant from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime Delinquency, also referenced as PCCD. Um, they offered districts the School Mental Health and Safety and Security Grant. Uh, with this grant, the district was able to commit to a full-time contracted mental health therapist for two years. As a reminder, this state grant was approved by the board at the um, public board meeting on November seventh, twenty twenty-two. And at this time at the next meeting next week, uh, we'll be seeking board approval for that two-year agreement with Child and Family Focus. That concludes our report.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? All right, Seenan, thank you again for the report. We'll move on now to our Facilities and Transportation committee report, Jeff.
Thanks, Amy. Um, no informational items this evening, but we do have several action items. And I'm going to ask our Wade maybe to quickly run through these, please.
I heard quickly. Um, so the electrical switch gear at the middle school is very old. Part of it is nineteen seventy-four, part of it is nineteen ninety, and it needs to be replaced to hopefully avoid failure in the future. We had very good bids, uh, seven of them uh, for the field house um, roof replacement. Uh, that is from nineteen ninety-five. So again, that is old enough so that it needs to be replaced. That's document fifteen dash two, and it is under budget. Item three is the replacement of electrical gear at Blue Bell. Um, temporary fix was installed, but we need to fix it um, more permanently. That is twenty-one thousand, six sixty-three in document fifteen dash three. Um, requesting approval for item four, which is the Bus Patrol, we've discussed it several times. Per the board request, we did find an additional vendor and per another uh, board request, uh, we went back to Bus Patrol and they have reduced their fee um, by a fair amount. Um, I sent a memo to the uh, board talking about the pros and cons of both of the proposals. Our recommendation is for Bus Patrol as per document fifteen dash four. And there would um, be added by next week if we decide to go forward with it. The uh, intergovernmental agreements with Witpain, Lower Gwinnett and Ambler, which have already been worked out with Solicitor's Office, but we would need to approve them as well. And the last item is to join in with the uh, county who has hired Providence Energy to do um, uh, sort of a global consolidation of electricity. And this would put us with them and we would hire Providence to get uh, favorable contracts for us that we would then bring back to the board.
Thanks, Wade. Um, just to comment on the Bus Patrol um, contract. Wade, I wanted to thank you and the team for going back and having those conversations with Bus Patrol. Um, in the end, they, they knocked off about a third um, off their uh, per bus technology fee, which um, is a significant um, concession to us and increases the probability that we will actually net some supplemental revenue as part of this contract. Um, so that's a big plus. And um, uh, my previous reservations on this contract are now gone, so I plan to support this next week. I just wanted to put it out there since I was the biggest.
Hey Wade, can you tell me how many buses we currently have that we would be paying the monthly technology fee for?
It's estimated at fifty-five.
So we have fifty-five buses and then the monthly fee on each of those is eighty-five dollars. So that's about forty-six seventy-five a month.
I have.
No, I'm just making sure. So if it's a two-hundred-and-forty-dollar violation and we get forty percent of that, that's ninety-six. So we'd have to get a fair amount of violations to break even here. Do we think we're going to make that?
So, so the, the answer is we've, we are only really guessing. The numbers that um, Bus Patrol put forward are very, very aggressive and they're included in the proposal, but it doesn't matter. Uh, it's really the cost structure that matters. When doing my own internal analysis and then what I provided to the board was based on actual activity of the school district that is very similar to us in a similar area, similar student size, stu, generally student, uh, excuse me, general um, comparability uh, geography-wise as well. So that's what I based it on, and it was um, seventy-seven paid tickets, I think, was what I used. So I think that's reasonable, even though frankly, it's still depressing, because that means that every day, there's almost four violations that are going to occur. So.
One, one thing, one thing to note though, this, the terms of the agreement are such that uh, if we don't, if there isn't enough ticket revenue generated, um, there is no actual, you know, financial cost to the district. So it's really in a sense, it's only, we can only get revenue from this program. We can't, it can't cost us any out-of-pocket.
Okay. So if we don't make those fifty-one violation, paid violations.
Then they waive the fees.
They waive that. We just pay percentage over on that, what we would make past that.
Correct.
That makes sense.
Yep.
That was a better answer.
In the same vein, can I quickly ask about um, parents have concerns about the um, buses sort of arriving at weird times and like not on schedule, which I understand completely. But a bussing app would be super useful, like the Find My Bus, so parents know when the bus will arrive. And I wonder too, if that would decrease traffic coming into the schools, because I feel like some parents just sort of say, I don't know when the bus is going to come. I got to drop you off. That's what I'm going to do. Um, I don't know. Any thought on that?
Yeah. So um, I, I sent a note to the board on this earlier in the year. And um, frankly, the transportation office was in pretty uh, decent chaos at the beginning of the year. So I didn't really want to do that because we didn't have consistent buses going out. So if, if I had a bus that was one-seventy-three one day and one-ninety-four the next day doing one-seventy-three, frankly, it just doesn't work. We may be to the point where we can say we're going to do that. Um, I was also somewhat hesitant to make a lot of changes if we were going to be doing later start time discussions. Again, if that's being postponed, then you know, maybe it's something that we can start looking at implementing. We are, we do have a fair amount on the plate, so you know, um, we could certainly look at it.
I think a lot of parents would really appreciate that information. Thank you.
Wait, you know that this says this quota expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two?
Yes, we'd have to get new, new quotes, but it'll be.
This is not valid. Okay, great. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Jeff, for that report.
Thank you.
I will now move on to our Finance Committee report. David?
Thanks, Amy. Um, we have one informational item tonight. Uh, the Finance Committee Budget Workshop Schedule is available now. The first workshop is February thirteenth at six-thirty PM. That's live and in person, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, not a Zoom meeting. Um, that'll be a topside budget discussion for coming school year. Um, includes the district's enrollment projections, new program or item request summary, uh, topside revenue look, a five-year uh, capital projects plan summary, and three items from the budget. The second meeting would be March the fourteenth, third meeting April eighteenth. And if we have a fourth meeting needed, would be May the eighth, intendedly. That's um, shown on document sixteen one A. We have four action items uh, we're seeking approval for next week. The first is approval of financial reports. Second is approval of an agreement with Board Docs to bring Board Docs software uh, for the coming school year. For document sixteen two, would be seeking approval of list of payments for the month of December thirty-first. Uh, per document sixteen three. And then item four is approval of several tax refund requests uh, due to bank payment issues and other circumstances. And if there are any questions, I would direct those to Mr. Coleman. And if there are any questions, I would direct those to Mr. Coleman.
Will we be getting the Port Box Pro?
Um, effective July one, twenty-twenty-three.
Cool. And will we get training on that?
Yes.
Awesome. Thanks.
Would we be using school-provided devices for that or personal? Or is it web-based? It is, right?
It's web-based, yeah.
Any other comments or questions? I would say I love Board Docs. We use it at MCIU and I think it's a really great program. So I'm excited for us to use. It's really simple, too. Board Docs, yeah, you'll really like. It's web-based. And also I just want to give, you got a shout out to your workshops. Like I think the community should attend these. It's so awesome to hear about our budget and learn about it. And I think more people should start attending those, just like policy committee meetings.
Mission is free, but we don't have coffee or cookies.
Well, we should start offering cookies. So I think they're really informative. I, I love like learning more about our budget. Yeah. So I think it's great. I think more people should attend them. So anyway, thank you again for your report. And now policy committee.
Let me just say, I'm stewing at the fact that the lone person who is in the room left about ten seconds before I began the policy committee report. And so therefore that individual will not learn all of the wonderful things we discussed at our last meeting. So buckle up everybody because it's a long one. We have twenty-two policies to review with all of you this evening. As you know, we are in year three of our board policy manual review. And this year includes the six-hundred, seven-hundred, eight-hundred, and nine-hundred series. In January, we began to review the eight-hundred series regarding operations. And tonight I am proud to report that we have, of those twenty-two policies reviewed, fifteen had changed, sorry, fourteen had changes, seven had none, and one is up for deletion. The fourteen relative to changes including, include public records, emergency preparedness, relations with law enforcement agencies, building security regarding the use of video recording, food services, transportation, use of audio and video recording on school vehicles, district social media, contracted services, suicide awareness, prevention and response, automated external defibrillators, and cardiopulmonary resuscitation, our policy regarding Narcan, records management, and electronic signatures. Those that had no change include school calendar, school security personnel, child abuse, opening exercises and flag display, school bus and commercial motor vehicles, maintaining professional adult, adult student boundaries, and educational equity. The final policy for review had to do with records destruction, which is being deleted because it is now encompassed in section eight-twenty-four regarding records management. While I would have gone through each one individually, everybody I'm sure has already read them in their entirety. And so my report this evening includes two informational items. Number one is the recap of the January meeting, which I just gave you. Number two is the policy committee review summary, which I just read to you in seventeen-one A. And the action items that we will have up for vote next week include B one through fifteen regarding the fourteen changes to policy as well as the one for deletion. That is my report for this evening. Does anybody have any wonderful questions? Anybody at all? Answer anything you want to know. Well, in that case, that is the end of the policy committee meeting. I appreciate everybody who went to the meeting itself. I think there were three of us, four of us. The most important committee in the entire school district and nobody shows up. Thank you once again. We are keeping our record intact. So thank you and have a great night.
When is your next meeting?
I have no idea. It's probably in the nine-hundred series. I'll find out. Katie, do you know when our next?
Yeah, it's in March.
It'll be in March.
Okay, great. So we'll make sure we announce it a couple of times so we get better turnout.
However, you want to advertise it, go ahead and do it and we'll look forward to seeing all of you there. Or not.
Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you.
All right. And there were no questions, right? No. Okay. We'll move on now to our racial equity oversight committee. Paul?
Thank you, Amy. My report is not nearly as exciting as Marshall's policy report, and I will be brief. We had our last meeting on January seventeenth, a very well-attended meeting. We had two agenda items. One was a presentation from the administration about staff diversity, specifically about recruitment and retention of diverse staff. I don't know if Dr. Dewan wants to touch on it, but it was very informative. I think the good news and the big takeaway is that the district has made significant progress recently in terms of recruiting and also retaining diverse staff. And so I think we're moving in the right direction. Still more work to be done, but excellent work so far. Uh, and the second point was a recap of our a debrief of our community listening session, which I reported on last meeting. So that also was very well-attended. We got good feedback from the participants who were there, who were members of the committee, as well as from the community at large. So overwhelming support to try to do more of those types of activities. And so please look for them to be scheduled potentially in the future. And lastly, our next meeting will be February twenty-first at seven PM via Zoom.
Wait, thank you for that report. Any comments or questions? Oh, wait. Well, again, thank you. We'll then move on to our board representative, extracurricular, Marshall.
Thank you. Uh, I believe we will have some items up for voting regarding extracurricular next time. I would like to say in particular, because there was interest in it this evening regarding volleyball. Just to maybe clarify certain issues very quickly. One, volleyball, boys volleyball became a, a, a club back in, about a year ago in March. There was tremendous interest in it and it became a club and it has been successful and it is absolutely wonderful. They would now like to become a varsity sport, JV and varsity sport, which we all think is a wonderful idea. The question is, can we accomplish that? And one of the things I heard tonight from all of our wonderful speakers that I just want to make sure everybody understands, because I thought I heard someone say that they wish we would consider this. And I think it is clear from everything that we've heard, we are considering. That's the whole purpose of this exercise. We absolutely are considering this. We would like to see a boys volleyball team at the junior varsity and varsity level. The question is, how do we accomplish that properly? So we are trying to do that and we are trying to do that in a way that we could maybe get them up and running this year if possible. And that is the goal if we can accomplish it. So to anybody who is concerned about it, the club is wonderful, the kids are wonderful. And if we can add it as a junior varsity and varsity sport, we are going to take every opportunity to do so. That's the end of my.
Thank you, Marshall. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. Um, next, MCIU reports. I'm going to actually, because of the time, hold off and give it to next week. North Monco, do you have a report? Next week. Okay. And then DSDA liaison?
Yeah, I have a fifteen-minute presentation prepared, but Gavin looks tired, so let's go home.
All right. We'll hold off on those reports until next week. A second public comment period. Do we have anybody registered online?
There is, oh, there's one. I'm sorry.
One? Okay.
We have two now. Christina D. Francisco is our first.
Christina, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi. So my name is Christina D. Francisco. I reside in Whitpain Township and I have two children in Shady Grove. I just wanted to take a moment tonight to recognize the courageous mother who at the last board meeting brought up that her child was being bullied and what she witnessed while volunteering at school. I found this to be very courageous of her. And I understand that the board does not engage with commenters. But I also encourage you guys to look into the Sunshine Act, which indeed encourages that engagement as commenters, your community, your parents and your teachers, when they feel heard, that accounts for something. With that being said, I do have some reservations. Often when these, for lack of a better word, hot topics are presented at meetings, there is an underlying dismissive tone from the board and sometimes even mockery. Tonight I witnessed some laughing. I witnessed changing in the tone of our voice when we repeated comments that were presented from our community. Or even more startling last week when we brushed off that we would only lose about two percent of teachers if we changed the proposed time for high school or middle school as if our teachers are replaceable. Furthermore, regarding that, we keep tossing out there that childcare is easy to come across. In Ambler alone, over eight percent of that community lives under the poverty level. As a parent, I know that affordable after-school care is far and few between. And lastly, and maybe the most startling of all, after this community member, this mother, this parent of a bullied kid who sustained injury due to it, this volunteer at our school poured her heart out. One board member went on to express how her two children did not have that same experience and we went on to talk about, well, I didn't think bullying was an issue. I encourage you guys that although I know not everybody can be satisfied or, you know, taken into account when we look at things and we look at the greater good. However, it is our responsibility that we make sure our community feels heard, that they feel that they are respected, that we get those resources out there for all. And quite frankly, that we leave our preconceived notions at the door because your lived experience is your lived experience. And we're talking about a lot of people here that what our board does affects. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Katie, you said someone else is registered? Okay.
We have Stacy Dewitt.
Stacy, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you. My name is Stacy Dewitt. I reside in Whitpain Township. I have a child at Stoney Creek and another one at the middle school. And I just wanted to make a quick comment and thank you to Dr. Chris Feld and Amy and everyone regarding the change in the policy regarding physical education clothing. Um, I know it seems almost insignificant for most people, but for a large number of children, things like self-esteem are very in line with what they're wearing. And if we made that small change, it really, I think, will make a huge difference, not only in the self-esteem of a lot of the kids, but also the participation in physical education across the board. So I want to say thank you. I know it was handled very quickly and it's much appreciated by a lot of parents.
Thank you for those comments, Stacy. Anyone else registered?
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
All right. Then we will go ahead and move on to board comments. And I do want to comment that Jeff recently received an award or a recognition.
Not yet.
Not yet. In May, right?
Yes.
Yes, with community partnerships for, right, for your leadership and your impact on school communities. I get that all right?
Yeah, you did. And actually, there is a Whistahicken, actually, there is a Whistahicken connection because Dr. Chris Field and the head of that school have interchanged discussions about how both schools can mutually benefit from the work in both schools to help our diversity programs in the school. So there is an explicit Whistahicken connection. So I'm also proud to say that my friend, Dr. Mumeen, who is the current Secretary of Education, will also be present at the, at the event, so, which will take place nearby at Germantown Academy.
Well, again, congratulations.
Thank you.
I think we should all give him a round of applause. Any other board comments?
Yeah, I'm just going to quickly respond to Christina's comment first. Thank you for your comment. I want to express my heartfelt apology to the community for saying that my two children were bullied because you're right, that is my lived experience. It was more of me saying I was surprised to hear about that. I am truly shocked to hear about that. I know the climate of the school that my kids go to, but you're right. It is not, it is not my place to say that. I apologize for saying that. And I want to know that we do take everything that everyone says seriously. The laughter you hear is because we've been sitting here for almost three hours and humor is how I get through a day. So that is why I laugh when I'm sitting here. I, I care deeply about this community and this, this school district. Otherwise, I wouldn't be sitting here. And so, you know, again, I'm sorry. My goal is to not offend anyone. I'm sure I will unintentionally, but, but I do apologize and thank you for your comment.
Joe?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that on Saturday, January twenty-eighth, in the evening, myself and my family had an opportunity to attend the first annual Lunar New Year Celebration that was hosted by the Whistahicken Asian Cultural Committee and the Asian Students Association at Whistahicken. It was a great opportunity to partake in an amazing spread of Asian foods, which is, I was unexpected, but much, much appreciated. The turnout was like fantastic. I was, I was hoping there would be a good turnout, but I was surprised when we got there and the parking lot was packed. There was probably well over a hundred people at the, at the event, which is the first Korean Presbyterian church on four-hundred North Bethlehem Pike. It used to be like a YMCA back in the day. I saw a lot of people from the Whistahicken community, a bunch of students, several staff members as well. So it was a great event and I look forward to it continuing next year. Like they said, they, they marked it as the first annual. So next year, when it comes around, I encourage everyone to consider attending and checking it out. Thanks.
Great. Yeah, please, extra, let us know when that is. That sounds like something I would really enjoy and I know my family would.
Sure.
No? All right. Well, then can I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.